Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie is not here. Mrs. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Present.
Mr. Campbell is not here. Mrs. Garner?
Present.
Mr. Johnson is not here. Mr. Edwards?
I'm here.
Mr. Sterdfan?
Present. Get a most to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Most for Mr. Honeycutt, second for Ms. Garner. Roll call.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sterdfan?
Present, yes.
Yes.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. The first order of business is going to be superintendent. We're going to start with the instruction and we'll go on from there. Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I really do appreciate your agreeing to come to this special meeting tonight. There are several things that have come up that would be expedited by your attention to these matters tonight. Nothing that we can vote on, that would wait. Any kind of vote would come at the regular meeting. But this are informational sessions that I think would demand your attention now and some consideration before our February meeting. First item on our agenda is an instructional item specifically related to the shortage of teachers. We have had a presentation and we have had, probably want to have some discussion related to what we will, what opportunities we have to help ourselves with that matter. Ms. Alga has been working very closely with the instructional committee on this, and so I want to ask Ms. Alga if she would come up now and go through the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Nichols. Thank you for your time this evening. I have a PowerPoint on your board docs, so everyone, I hope, has access to that. I'm here tonight to talk about some of our teacher shortage concerns, and you know what those concerns are, and I guess I need to use this. (beep) You know why this is not working? He's driving for me, that's perfect, thank you. So you know that our concerns, number one is that we have a shortage of teachers, we are unable to find the qualified staff that we need in our division to best benefit students. That also filters into salaries, and I believe Mr. Nichols shared information with you at the board meeting last month and showed you a comparison, and Mecklenburg does not fare well in our region or across the state with regard to teacher salaries. So we are sort of struggling in that area. And also, the high number of provisionally licensed teachers and the impact that that has on our student achievement, because the bottom line is student achievement. We want to make sure we hire the most qualified teachers that will stay with us to get that momentum going and serve our children well, our school division will be successful. So that is the purpose of what we're going to talk about tonight. So currently, in Mecklenburg, we have 350 teachers, and I just want to point out to you that 25 of those teachers have less than one year of teaching experience, that's about 7% of our teaching staff. Forty-five teachers hold a provisional license, that's a fairly significant number when you combine those two for the entire division. We have nine teachers that currently teach outside of their endorsement area because of the need and because they may be teaching something related to their field, for example, earth science might be involved in biology, or biology might be involved in chemistry and so on. So the real critical needs have been math, Spanish, English, earth science, library, media specialist, and those positions have gone unfilled this year. Some of these longer than for the one year. Good, go to the next slide. So I wanted to give you this history and this comparison of positions over the past year and, in some cases, more than a year. We have not had a physics teacher in this division since Ms. Gentry left us, and so that position's gone unfilled for some time. It's really difficult to find a physics teacher. For mathematics, we've had seven positions that were open last year. We offered a bonus, the board approved a bonus for math, Spanish, and for special education. Think that bonus really served us well, because out of those seven positions, we have filled three of those math positions, and we currently have four positions open. So those are those ongoing problems. Special education, we did much better. We had nine positions and we filled nine of those positions. We already have a position open currently that we are looking to fill and hopefully we'll have filled for the upcoming school year. For Spanish, we had three positions. We used the bonus to hire two Spanish teachers in, and we have one position that has not been filled this year. Earth science, one position with a long-term sub that has not been filled this year. We have an English position that has not been filled, it's been filled with a long-term sub that we are hopeful will go into a provisional license, we're working on that. Library, media specialist, very difficult again to fill, we have gone all year with that position. Health PE, which you would think would be easy to fill, we had four of those positions. We were able to fill all of those, one of them most recently at Bluestone High School. We have an ag position. Historically, that position is very difficult to fill, there are not many ag graduates out there, so it really makes it tough for us to fill that position. Culinary arts, we don't have any of those positions, but should we have any of those, another historically difficult position to fill. And then we had elementary positions, we had eight. But that seems to be a change for us because that keeps cycling around. Our elementary teachers are not staying all year, so the positions become open more frequently than we'd like for them to. So that's just a brief history of where we are with positions. So I wanted to share with you some information on the pipeline, where our teachers come from. And so I've called these universities to get numbers for their graduates in spring of 2019. Virginia State is going to have eight graduates. So we're going to a job fair there. We'll be vying for some of those candidates, hopefully as many as we can get to come to Mecklenburg. One of them has already gone to Greensville, they've already committed to Greensville, so that narrows their pool down to seven. Christopher Newport has 63 education graduates in the spring. They have mostly elementary. Of course, you see others, nine English, five music, three history, two music choral, two Spanish, one chemistry, one biology, and one ESL. So you see how small the pool is for the positions that we need to fill. I was waiting on information from Longwood, did not get it, they promised they'd have it to me, but I don't have it, but I will push that out to you when they do get it to me. Radford University has a large class in comparison to these other universities with 133 graduates, and with going into all of the detail about each of those areas, again, you can see that the pools are limited when you fall into a specified content area, so. Hampton University has, they think, 20 graduates in spring of 2019. So our pool is very limited, we just don't have the teaching force that we used to have for various reasons. So, next slide. We have some possible solutions that we'd like to bring to your attention. Some are immediate, that we could put into play immediately, and some are more long-term. But just so that you are aware of those options, that's the purpose of sharing this information this evening. So Educational Partners International is a company, or I'm going to assume a company, yes, that came and met with the instructional committee, spent a good deal of time talking with us about how this program works, the advantages, disadvantages. It is a program that offers qualified K-12 instructional classroom teachers for all subjects, including those that are hard to fill. They are international teachers, they come to us on a J-1 visa. We have had international teachers in the past, they have been on an H-1B visa, and so there's a difference in those two visa types. A J-1 visa, Mr. Long, who is here with the EPI this evening, and I so appreciate him coming, as he's explained it to us, EPI will sponsor the J-1 visa candidates that come. So they will take care of paying for expenses like, well, moving expenses coming to this country, acclimating themselves to the region and so on. But they also cover health insurance. We are not responsible for VRS because they're only here for a limited period of time, and for the first year to a year and a half, we do not pay FICA. So on the next slide, you will see that I've given you a breakdown on what those expenses look like and the savings to the division. So we would save nearly $2,000 per candidate, just at a first-year teacher coming in at our lowest salary as a hybrid employee, if I were looking at the expense that would incur for the division. So I just would like to ask Mr. Long if he could come up and share additional information. I've just given you a very broad overview, but if you have additional information, Mr. Long, that would be great.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, members of the board.
Welcome.
I come to you, really, with an understanding of international teachers as a former high school principal a number of years ago, and had the opportunity to turn around several of my academic programs by taking advantage of several international teachers coming in under a J-1 visa program. From that point forward, I really saw the value added, at least in my situation, and I've been working now with international teachers for 20 years. And we are, Educational Partners International is one of approximately 53, I believe, J-1 visa sponsors in the United States. We are recognized and operate under the U.S. State Department. They have a, their teacher program, there are several different categories under the J-1 visa, but we are exclusively working with teachers. And the difference is that under a J-1 program, your teachers can come in initially for a period of time of three years, and that can be extended for two additional years, which gives you a total time of five years for an international teacher. Since this is, program is intended as a cultural initiative by the State Department, they then require the teacher to leave the United States for two years. After two years, that same teacher can come back in and teach in the United States for up to another five-year cycle. And actually, I have a number of teachers that, they're in their second go-round right now, and many of the school districts hold on to those teachers, stay in touch with them, and when that two years is up, they ask to have them back again. So it's like a homecoming for a number of them. But we recruit around the world from over 60 countries. We extensively vet the applicants. We place the applicants and support the applicants for the duration of time that they are in your district. I had the opportunity, Ms. Nan indicated earlier, that to sit down with a number of folks here and go into more detail, and I believe that you perhaps have already received some information about the program, and being somewhat mindful of the time limits, and I'd just like to pause and see if perhaps you have any questions that I may answer beyond the information you've already received.
Anyone have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Okay, we're paying them 12,000, we pay you $12,500 to bring the teacher here, right?
Per year, yes, sir.
Per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that covers, we have to pay their insurance. They can't participate in your health insurance because of the requirements from the State Department, and...
We need you to get our insurance for us. If you can, if you can do it so much cheaper, you know, I mean, we're, our numbers don't, you know, divide.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, they also do not participate in the state retirement system.
Okay.
So you're not contributing to retirement, you're not paying for the health insurance, and for the first year and a half, you're not paying for FICA.
Does the foreign country that they come from also pay you a fee?
No, no. We do not charge the teacher a fee at all.
So we're the only person that pays any money into your company?
Pays a fee, yes, sir. That's to cover our expenses for what we do and what I do with the teachers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What countries do they come from?
Well, 60 different countries right now. Generally speaking, Central America, South America, Asia, Baltic States, Europe, kind of, globally speaking, that's basically it. A lot of our teachers are from the Philippines, a lot of teachers from Jamaica. Most recently, we've been recruiting from the Baltic States. We have a number of teachers now from Africa. It's a very diverse group that we're able to, and we get about, probably about 3,000 applications a year, and so it's a year-round process for us, with a whole department just devoted to responding to inquiries and that sort of thing. Yes, sir.
How do we know that their teaching certificates are equal to what we have in the United States?
It's required under the State Department regulations. We can only bring in teachers that will be licensed, meet the licensing requirements in the state of Virginia.
So they'll be tested when they get here?
They will, you have to apply for their license after they're here. But they, we have their transcripts vetted by independent third parties that are approved by the state of Virginia, so we know when they come in that they will qualify to be licensed, and we guarantee it. If there ever was a hiccup, we take care of it, and you're not responsible for it.
The reason I ask you this question, I'm probably the only member that's been on this board long enough to remember, we tried this before, and we had a lot of hiccups.
That was with a company that I was with some time ago.
Right.
And that's why I'm not with them.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other board members have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Palmer?
Housing, do you all provide housing for them or anything of that type?
We have a department of teacher support. It's divided into two groups. One helps the teacher and the family members as they transition from their home country to North Carolina and Virginia and the other states in which we work. Another department works with them in helping them get established and being settled and supporting them with their basic needs as well as with instructional needs that they'll have as well. So yes, the short answer is yes, we help with that.
And the last question is how about tax? Do you all do anything as far as helping them with their tax the first year?
Anything, I'm sorry, sir, I...
Tax, do you all provide them with any kind of tax help the first year?
Tax help?
Yes.
They, they are taxed as a local hire would be taxed, okay? So they pay income tax. There, the United States government has what they call an income tax treaty with about 40 countries, and that income tax treaty, under certain circumstances, exempts teachers from having to pay income tax. The problem comes is that really no two tax treaties are the same, and there's been a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of federal court proceedings relevant to those taxes. So our advice to the school district that we partner with is that they just pay their income taxes, anyone else would, and then when it's time to file for their income tax, it's up to the individual to claim that exemption and to work with a tax authority. But just as the school system is not a tax authority, EPI is not a tax authority, and we're not in a position to advise them on their particular situation as it relates to the income tax treaty our government has with their government.
That's why, actually, I know quite a bit about that, the tax problem and...
Yeah, I don't know if you're familiar, in Jamaica, there's a misconception that a teacher coming on a J-1 visa from Jamaica is tax exempt. And because the intent is for a minimum of three years, and the tax treaty reads that it's, they're exempt if they come in with the intent of two years, court rulings have said that Jamaican teachers are not exempt from paying income tax. And that's been a real big issue in years past, but we've cleared that up in the last several years.
Okay. Ms. Garner?
Yes, I forgot to ask the question the other day.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If we decide to, we need a math teacher.
Yes.
And they contact you to bring a person in. That person's been to the United States once before. Would she start as a beginner teacher in Mecklenburg County, or do we have to account for the three years she was here before and start as a fourth-year teacher?
She would receive credit for all years of teaching that she has had since she received her bachelor's degree.
In the United States or anywhere?
Anywheres.
Okay.
And we, that's another thing that we vet, we are, we have the documentation to show that, you know, how many years of teaching experience they've had. In some countries, a teacher can begin with a three-year degree, but the State Department will not recognize a three-year degree now. They used to, but they don't any longer. So they, you can only count from the time going forward when they have earned their bachelor's degree.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir, I do have a couple of questions. Good afternoon. And also, Mrs. Alga, I might need Ms. Alga to help with this as well. It's my understanding that when these teachers come, that the building administrator, the principal, they would be the ones interviewing these candidates for the job, supposing this person that came to the school was not a good fit for that particular position, even though they were qualified for the position, but it wasn't a good fit. How do we work that?
Okay, that's another good question, thank you. As you can imagine, we work with over 1,200, 1,400 teachers, so you're going to run into that from time to time. We guarantee the teacher's going to meet your instructional standards, just as if you were hiring someone from Hampton-Sydney, and they would come in and they're trying to learn the ropes. International teachers are going to have those same needs. They're not going to know your grading system, they're not going to know the peculiarities that relate to a specific school. So they're going to need someone as a buddy teacher to show them around and help them. Content-wise, they'll hit the ground running. Every school has a little tweak to a curriculum, they're going to need to have that information so they can organize their lesson plans accordingly. They'll need to know the structure of the lesson plans and how often that needs to be reviewed and who reviews it, just the ins and outs and roundabouts of tiny town, so to speak. But yes, now, after it's all said and done, you see, you have a teacher who's having some issues, we'd work with the teacher, I'm sure you would be working with the teacher at your end, we'd join hands on that and work together. We have a teacher support department that does that sort of thing. I'm in the center of that. And after it's all said and done, if that teacher is not meeting your expectations after we've given it our best shot collectively, then with the teacher having a formal observation that indicates that the teacher overall is failing to meet the expectations, I would sit down with the school principal and the teacher, review that formal observation, and from that point moving forward, the teacher would be given notice, they have 30 days in which to comply with the expectations to demonstrate they are moving in the right direction. After 30 days, I'd sit down with them again, ask the principal or the administrator in that school to make another observation to document where they are in the process, and if no significant growth is being documented, then that teacher would be served notice they're no longer eligible to continue with, under the current J-1 visa program. And not being able to continue under the J-1 visa program means they can't work, and they have to leave the country.
Okay.
It removes that teacher from your process that you would normally use internally. If a teacher does something totally stupid, they, that's it, they're gone. There's no question about that.
And I do have one other question, and I guess, again, this would be for Nan and Mr. Nichols. If we were to implement this program at our next board meeting or whenever we're going to vote on this, do we have, would we be getting teachers in right away to fill these gaps that we have had this year and continue to have, such as earth science, Spanish, library, media specialist, I mean, would we be able to recruit those?
Another good question. We have exhausted all of our current visas for this current school year, so we will be receiving a visa allotment from the State Department next month, and that will be for the following, this 2019, 2020 school year. Now, I was very interested in looking at what was shown on the overhead, I know we have, we, see, we get applications in all different subject areas, maybe we place people in welding. I saw you had an agricultural opening, that would be a good point to discuss and to look at. I mean, we can selectively recruit for hard-to-fill positions, given enough time, we can find what you need.
Okay, thank you.
But specifically to your answer question?
It would be for next year.
It would be for next year. And I would like also for, to throw a question out.
Yes, sir.
Before they come over, do our administrators have an opportunity to participate in the selection process?
Yes, sir. We use a, we have what we call a dashboard, and if you have a teacher who wants to, a principal says, yes, I need math, okay, or maybe then you tell me, we need math teachers. I would go into our database, all the math teachers who are, we have vetted, who are at the top of our list, I would put in that link to that database. You then can pull those teachers up and look at their video clip, look at their visas, and if you would like to interview them, we use a platform called Zoom, Z-O-O-M, and that platform allows multiple people from different locations to participate in the same interview at the same time. And so you could have, say, with two high schools, you have two principals, they can't get away, you have the central office, Nan, we hear one involved in that interview, or maybe secondary folks. So you could have up to six people at one time logging into that interview from different locations, and we record that interview for you. So after the interview is concluded, we'll give you that link to the interview, you can store it and save it and use it at a later date if you're not ready to make a decision. You can send it out as a, in an email format to whoever you want to look at. Once you decide, yes, this is the teacher that we want, then we take it from there, and we take care of all the paperwork, and ultimately, they end up coming here. We will deliver them here. I know that, Mr. Palmer, maybe from your school days, maybe you're reflecting on driving with international teachers, I don't know, but rule number one, the first week, don't get behind an international teacher driving. No, but you do want to, you'd like to know that we have a car program too. So an international teacher coming in, they need a transportation, you don't have Uber here, I get that, and they're going to have to have a vehicle, and so we have a program where they can either purchase a car, which is a second-hand used car, it's in good traveling condition, or they can lease a car for a period of time, take care of the car insurance, we deliver the car to the district area, and we also deliver the teacher, so.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Can people from the United States sign up to go over, it sounds so good, I want to go to another country. You got a free car, you get, don't pay any taxes, I'm ready to roll.
Well, in my former life, a company I was working with, they tried that, and the problem we had was the language barrier.
We have that here.
You don't have enough people speaking, in the United States, speaking multiple languages.
Right, but we had that, we had that with our last batch. We had...
Well, and this is why I think it's so important for that interview to determine their, not just their language proficiency, but the accent and how well that's going to fit in the setting that you have in mind.
Yep, we almost need to let the children interview them. They're the ones who can't understand them, you know, not us.
And that, that's possible, I mean, we have no limits on what you can do with it.
Okay. All right, Ms. Palmer?
Mr. Chairman, one more question for me.
Yes, sir.
Once you get them here, do you have some type of program to work along with these people, like a tutoring?
Yes, sir.
One of the programs that I have background in, that I knew of, they, so many Saturdays per month, they have to meet, and I'll tell you the program, it's Teach for America, and what happens is, these people, if they are having a problem with discipline, for example, because in some countries, discipline is not a problem there, but when you get to America, it, in some cases, and so as a result, when they go in on that Saturday, they would pose that question to the people there... the people there and whom is supposed to know how to deal with that. So I'm asking, do you all have some kind of program that works along with the people once they get here as a somewhat of a tutorial program?
We do. We have a weekly webinar series every Friday at four o'clock. This webinar is available to all of your teachers in the district, not just international teachers. And you also have the opportunity to go back into the archives and retrieve any of the previous webinar series, and you can use those internally for your own professional development. We expect all of the international teachers to tune into that on that Friday. And the reason that we selected Friday is that's what the teachers have told us works best with their schedule. We also have an ebook series on teaching in the American classrooms, and that series is available, they've downloaded it on a Kindle format, and it's embedded with a number of video clips that highlight different aspects of, and things that we encounter that are problematic for all teachers, not just foreign teachers. And those video clips are a complement to the written material that's in those ebooks as well. And that's available to the district personnel. It's not something that's just limited to international teachers. On top of that, we have our teacher support group. And if we run into that situation, as Mr. Honeycutt was asking about, with, if you have a teacher who's headed south, we would have that teacher dialed into the teacher support group, and they would be making regular calls to them. And I would be out here as well, working and observing in the classroom, that sort of thing, just to be sure that things are getting on the right track. We definitely want to train to stay on the track.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, Mr. Turbin. Ms. Garner and I serve on the instruction committee together, and we were able to meet with Mr. Long and his cohort. Also, there were three secondary principals present at that committee meeting, along with our secondary instruction later. So I just wondered if you were interested in hearing about their responses as we talked about that.
I think just for now, we can listen to his presentation. We'll have an opportunity next month to decide, it'll be up for action, the different options as far as we move forward. You know, sometimes it's better, I think we, with his presentation and what Ms. Alga has given us, I believe that's adequate. The board members would like to go in a different direction, we'll get an input from the administrators. We can do that prior to our vote at our next meeting.
So will the instruction committee have a recommendation for you?
Next month. Yes, ma'am.
At the regular February.
At the regular February meeting. Ms. Bailey? I meant, not Ms. Bailey, Ms. Garner? Do you have anything else for them?
No. He answered a lot of my questions when I met with him during the day.
Okay.
And I had just forgot to ask him if they'd been here before or talked before, would we start from the beginning or on their stem?
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
I just have one other quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Want to say thank you for your time coming here and presenting this. My niece and nephew are in Chesterfield County Schools, and I know they use several of your people there. They had their third and fourth grade, and I was able to sit in a couple of their classes as they've been moving along and was very pleased at what I saw. You know, again, I thought that it would be a big barrier with the language and so forth, but I was, they were very in tune at that age, so I'm excited to see what this could bring to Mecklenburg County to help out with our shortage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
No.
Anything else? Mr. Nichols?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir.
This is going to be one of two options we're going to have for action next month. The other option is what Ms. Alga's going to be presenting shortly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, man. I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
So hopefully, that provided the detailed information that you need for making a decision as to moving forward with this sort of plan. The thing with EPI...
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
We received a folder from Mr. Long.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a folder that the ones that weren't at the meeting, they could see what countries they came from?
I can get my folder. If you give me a moment, I'll bring it back. If that would be okay.
I'd also like to see where they've placed people in the United States in different states, as far as references.
South Carolina, Florida.
I mean, you can give me a list of those. I just want a list of it. I want it on paper, if you could.
Okay.
When you give us the rest of that information.
So did you bring any of those folders with you this evening by any chance? That's fine, I've got mine. I will share it up.
FedEx was supposed to send them today.
It's okay. We're good.
A quick one is, we currently have teachers in Florida, South Carolina, and North Carolina, one teacher in Virginia, because the district four... A district four years ago contacted us to ask if we'd be a sponsor for one teacher they wanted to have back again. And they weren't pleased with how the other sponsor handled it. So we, we said yes, but we have not been working in Virginia because we just now received authorization from the state superintendent, and we needed that authorization in order to be able to sit down like we are today with the board.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Actually, that's how the information came to me, was through an email with the state superintendent's endorsement of EPI. So with the EPI solution, what we have is that it does provide qualified teachers for hard-to-fill positions. It does meet an immediate need, so we wouldn't be worrying about whether or not someone would come. It does broaden our cultural diversity, which I think is important in today's world, and it's a cost savings. And I want to go back to that slide on the cost savings. The HDHP is the High Deductible Health Plan, so we're clear on that. And the GLI is the Group Life Insurance, that you're not responsible for paying. So I just wanted to make sure you knew what those acronyms were. The next option that I'm bringing to you this evening is Teachers for Tomorrow. That is more like a grow-your-own program that I think would be very beneficial for the division in moving forward. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, so we'd be starting on the ground level. So it is Virginia's CTE program for recruiting high school students into the teaching profession. It would be open to 11th and 12th grade students. If we move with this program, there are eligibility requirements. They have to maintain a 2.7 grade point average or its equivalent. They have to have three satisfactory teacher recommendations, and they have to write an essay to be a part of this program. You don't just say, hey, I think I want to join that program. You do have to meet some of these eligibility requirements. So the students before that, to sort of get them interested, would be eligible for early childhood program in ninth or 10th grades in preparation for Teachers for Tomorrow, because I think if we would introduce students to the possibilities of education and teaching, that we could grow that program, and people will want to come back home. As our ninth graders move into the program for early childhood, they would be eligible to take the parent pro assessment. We've talked with folks in Halifax, and those students have taken the parent pro. And now, when they're in the Teachers for America program, they are actually serving as instructional assistants and assisting teachers with Algebra I, teaching those content areas and helping in that regard, which I think would really serve us well. So it gives them that experience, that hands-on experience, and it helps our current students that are trying to master the skill in the content area, and is also beneficial for the teacher. So it's a win-win for the students and the school division. Now, Mr. Cypher's would be working with that program, and I didn't know if you might have any questions for him about how that might work.
Don't we have a teacher that's certified to teach this program in the county? I know I went through the program, but we didn't have enough students in Bluestone to do it.
It's my understanding that as long as you're certified on the secondary level, you can teach Teachers for Tomorrow. Is that correct? Oh, sorry. Didn't know you were.
So they've changed it. They had a special program that the Teachers for America did.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Alga and myself looked it up, and as long as they are endorsed and have a certain number of years of teaching experience in the secondary level, then they can do the Teacher for Tomorrow program and actually teach the class. And talking with Halifax, those teachers would have to go through a special conference training in the summer to be able to do that.
Have they got a special curriculum that they follow?
Yes. It's just like in the rest of the CTE program, there's a set group of competencies and everything that they have to follow for the class.
Mr. Edwards?
How long has Halifax been doing it?
This is Halifax's first year. They had previously done it some years ago, but because of lack of interest, they had discontinued the program. They have bought back their previous instructor who was teaching it, who had a specialization in math and another subject area, and they have seventeen students in there currently. They have it set up, so the Teachers for Tomorrow I runs as a first semester class, and Teacher for Tomorrow II runs as a second semester. In their first semester, those students completed the parent pro assessment. They had sixteen out of seventeen that passed. And during their second semester, they're actually teaching or assisting with the teaching on-site at a school.
Mr. Ritchie?
What is, I was just looking through this, what does a student get out of this? How do you get students to sign up for this? If there's just, there's more work for them to do?
You can run some of it as a dual enrollment option, but the teacher would have to meet the Virginia Community College System requirements for their endorsement to be able to run it as a dual enrollment option.
Did Halifax do that?
Halifax is not currently running as a dual enrollment option. They are partnering with or looking at working with the Higher Education Center in South Boston to actually, where the students would finish. Once they finish, then they would be able to continue. They have some students they're trying to get who do not want to go away to college, per se. They want to do something online, so they're trying to work with the Higher Education Center and some of the education facilities there to actually do something online. So they would stay there and continue to work as a, in the classroom as an aide while they're getting their education to finish their degree.
So we'll help them get lined up with an appropriate bachelor's degree program?
They're actually, they're going to work with the Higher Education Center. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, did they get any credit, high school credit for taking that?
It is a high school credit. It would be a high school credit for each of those courses. It's just one semester, it's a thirty-six-week class, is what they consider.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
We are pursuing this option and have been for the last year as part of our Health and Human Services program, because it's a human services part component. We've been working with Longwood, the Higher Ed Center, and others, and we are, we've been looking at trying to get this program in place for our schools for a while, because it's a natural, it's really the best way we know of to grow our own teachers. We're also talking with the Tobacco Commission about sources of funding for those students as they move away, or as they go through it, as part of their tuition payment.
Right. I was wondering if there was something that would attract students into that?
Yes.
And I know the Tobacco Commission has a grant.
That is correct.
That they pretty broadened.
There's the Tobacco Commission funding that helps, but then it's also opportunities to come back to underserved area like ours and have some payoff as you teach through the process.
Yeah, their federal student loans, I think.
That's right.
Okay. So they'll get extra guidance, counseling?
Yes. It's all a part of that career pathway that we would build for them to be able to work with. The difficult thing, as Garner mentioned, is getting that first group started with it. And I think that's one of the reasons that they've moved it, so that you don't have to have a specific certification, but can be a secondary teacher that is licensed to be able to work with this class with some extra training.
Mr. Honeycutt?
So, Mr. Cypher's, again, I see here the students could, said it could enter the early childhood course in the ninth and 10th grades. So would our councils be polling these children that may be interested in that education career coming out of the eighth grade, going into the ninth and 10th grade? I mean, we're seeking out those childrens, you know, who would be interested in going into education as a career.
Yes, sir. All of the students in the seventh grade are required to do an academic and career plan, and that will be part of the process to identify some of the things that they're interested in, as well as, for example, next week, we'll be taking the eighth graders over to look at some of the different electives at the, at both high schools to see some of the things they're interested in. And they would not necessarily have to do the early childhood education program before doing the Teacher for Tomorrow, just kind of give them a prep and kind of do an avenue is what we think of, and give them a better idea of what's involved in the program. That's not a prerequisite, though.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir.
You see, you've been looking at this for a year and a half?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to implement this next year?
That's, well, it's our goal to get it in place. One of the things that's been holding us up so far is trying to work so closely with Longwood University, because they have really wanted to implement in this area with Longwood. And there have been a couple of grants that they have been seeking that they have not been successful in getting, but we were lined up to work with them in that perspective. We can't wait for a Longwood. We need to move ahead and try to get this in place as soon as possible.
Well, my thoughts, are you going to be looking at whether or not we can implement that?
Our goal would be to try to get this implemented as soon as possible.
So you'll be bringing back a recommendation to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, any other questions?
I do have a question. I know we'd have to do the supervisors, but for the seniors that were in this class, if we all put so much on their tuition when they go to college, that they sign a contract that you'll come back and work so many years to pay off this, could this be something that would entice them to go in a program like this?
That's the next piece that I'm going to be talking to you.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Garner, you jumped it. That would be, that's perfect.
And I do know, I'm going back with the childcare. I know Ms. Tally, if you see in the paper every now and then, she takes her kids over to the elementary school. And when I was doing it, we basically taught the kids how they would teach little children. And a lot of the ones that are in those programs are ones that are interested in going to elementary education.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We currently have three students now who are doing an internship at South Hill Elementary.
Okay. Ms. Bailey, you have something?
Yes, the Virginia School Board Association had a breakout session on Teachers for Tomorrow, and I just wanted to share that, I think it was Bedford County, had a robust Teachers for Tomorrow program, and they actually taught the 11th and 12th graders in the same section. So the first year was just 11th graders, and then, so they only needed, required one teacher. That's the point. And then that same teacher taught 11th and 12th graders in the same classroom. She was just able to break them out and differentiate the instruction for both grade levels. So it helped with the scheduling, so it, because numbers are small when you first start a program like this, so you need to maximize the time in the classroom. So I just wanted to say that we need to do this ASAP.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. It sounds like a great program. So, Mr. Nichols, we'll wait on you to tell us we can move forward with it.
Well, it's encouraging that Halifax was able to get as many first years as they have been able to get when they weren't expecting anything like that number. So we're, we'll be hopeful to be able to set it up so we can have the same type of result.
So I guess for us, we just have to offer it and see whether or not we have participation.
And get some marketing components out there to the students to understand the opportunities that come through it. Yes.
Mr. Cypher's?
Yes.
We did mention the promotion of that program and many avenues to get parent interest, student interest, a lot of advertising to get this started.
Who would be tasked with that, Mr. Nichols? Because if we're looking at doing it next year, that really has to start now.
Right. Well, that's part of Mr. Cypher's.
That's Mr. Cypher's.
Yes. Yes, and we will be responsible for advertising and pushing it in, as well as completing the process through DOE. The first step in the process is, we would need to go ahead and do surveys. You have to do surveys of all of your sixth through 12th graders to determine their interest in it. And then, once you do that, there's an application process as well to fill out, and that's based on, you look at the data as far as the labor market data for teachers in our region, as well as the national need for teachers as well.
Will that be something with the survey, we can get back by our next board meeting?
We can, we can do something similar if, to what we did, for example, with the new school names. It would be much quicker. We could do something possibly with Google Forms and get the teachers to administer it in that manner. We could get them to administer in all of their first block classes, or however the principals chose to do that. Yes, sir.
So possibly, next meeting, we can have some tentative information.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Alga?
Yes, sir.
Want to continue on?
Mr. Cypher's, I appreciate that. So, Ms. Garner, help me jump right ahead to the Teacher Scholars Program. So I knew that for several years, Henrico County Public Schools has had the Teacher Scholars Program, and I contacted Dr. Williams there. She sent information to me about the program that they started in 2015, where they created an interest in their graduating class, their seniors. So those seniors made a commitment to Henrico County Public Schools. Of course, they're all vetted as well, they have to go through an application process and so on. And then they go to college.[1747.66] Now, again, they have identified needs, so we're looking for teachers that are going into math, technology. I think I have that on here, yes. Exceptional education, science, and so on. So those areas are the areas that they're seeking for when students return to Henrico County Public Schools. So on the next slide, they have to be approved, so there's an application process. They do have to submit to lesson plans. I know that that's part of the requirement. They also have to have reference forms from their student teacher, I guess advisor, so to speak, from their university advisor. And they have to be flexible in their placement when they come back to Henrico County Public Schools. It may not be what they were thinking, but they have to be flexible in that. There is a $5,000 scholarship that they offer for that, but they also have a three-year commitment. If they don't fulfill that commitment, then they have to pay back the $5,000. So their first group was, in the next slide, eleven applicants the first year. And if the last bullet that you see there, they already have one from that group that has come back. They were able to finish in that three-year program and come back, and they're teaching special education in Henrico. The next year, they had seventeen applicants, and the last couple of years, they've had twenty to twenty-three applicants in the program. So it's growing, and it's an option, a possibility. Again, it's not one of those quick fixes. It's something that will take time. It's just making the decision of whether or not we want to commit the funds to move forward in that direction. So, any questions about that?
Mr. Nichols, your thoughts?
It's certainly a program to follow up on, another one I'd like to teach for tomorrow that would be very beneficial for us.
So you'll be making a recommendation one way or the other? Okay.
And then finally, some research on the Call Me Mister program, which was, I believe, started at Clemson University, but Longwood now hosts that program here in Virginia. The MR is an acronym for Men Instructing Students Toward Effective Role Models. There's a Dr. Maurice Carter at Longwood that oversees the program currently for them. So they are trying to address the critical shortage of African-American male teachers, particularly in Virginia. And what they like to do is look at eighth graders, and they ask principals and guidance counselors to make recommendations of their eighth grade students. Dr. Carter comes to the school division personally to interview those students to see if they would be a good fit. They then, if selected, go to Longwood to spend one week at a camp there where they just are familiarized with campus life and the exposure to a university and what that is like. So then, as they move through their high school career, then later on, they apply to the Call Me Mister program. With that, they can be offered two thousand, I'm sorry, $2,500 to a $19,000 scholarship based on need. Most of the folks that, or most of the young men that are selected are first-generation college participants, so they've never had this experience before. Their families never have. Ninety-six percent of the young men that finish this program go back home. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity. They look at about fifty to bring into the program. There is a $100 annual fee for the school division to partner with Longwood, and Dr. Carter explained that to me as an administrative cost. So other than that, he comes and meets with principals and guidance counselors and does all of the legwork, so to speak, to determine whether or not there are young men from our school division that would be a good fit for the Call Me Mister program. So that is another one of the solutions. It's a long-term solution, but nonetheless, I think it would really benefit students locally, and I think it would benefit the school division over time.
So Ms. Alga, $100 starts the program?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nichols, what are your thoughts?
Think we need to get into it right away?
So.
Write the check tonight, right?
What is the process if Mr. Nichols chooses to move forward with that? What does he have to do to get it going?
Well, I would go back and contact Dr. Carter. He did tell me that it's not too late to be a partner with them for the upcoming school year as far as trying to, you know, identify maybe eighth grade students that could come to the camp this summer and see where that goes from there. So we would just get more information about what the process is and then make it work.
So with the amount of $100, it's not really a board vote. Mr. Nichols?
You will hear at the February meeting of a number of career camps that we will be making available to students this year through the innovative grant that we had with the SYDC as well as 4H and others, and this could very easily be added as that, to those camps for students to participate in.
Well, this one, I guess, is simply just making a call saying, let's get started.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Palmer, Ms. Bailey, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Chairman, this, I am quite familiar with this program with some of, one of the schools that I have been affiliated with, and it is a big thing out there now. And I'm, for one, am very up on it and would like to see it brought to the county.
Yes, sir, I would, too.
Ms. Bailey? I meant, Ms. I'm Garner?
That's the third time.
I know.
Ms. Garner?
It's hard to change habits.
It says fifty young men. We would be competing for the, of state?
Well, whichever divisions have partnered with Longwood.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't mean that every division in the state has partnered with Longwood for the Call Me Mister program.
And who's the Dr. Carter? Maybe I wasn't?
Maurice Carter.
Okay, it's not our Dr. Carter.
Yes, Dr. Maurice Carter.
Is he with Longwood?
He was a former superintendent of Fluvana County, and he is in Longwood. Yes, and he's wonderful.
All right, and then you have these fifty participants.
Well, statewide.
Right, right.
Right. We would hope to get a spot.
And recruit them to?
Yes.
They come back, it says about ninety-six percent of them come back home.
Yes, sir. Will they mentor these young men and guide them through the educational process? And hopefully, they become licensed teachers for us and come back home.
So that would be the, the way they would seek to do it is if we put our kids into it, have a chance that they would come back to us?
Yes, sir. And just give them the opportunity. Even if they didn't come back home, it's a wonderful opportunity that they might not have taken advantage of with their program like this.
Sure, but it's better if they come back home.
Yeah, it is much better if they go back home. That, that is what we'd love to see, but.
I think that's good. I think there's a lot of confusion about what all it takes to be a teacher. I mean, there's a lot to, as you know.
Yes, sir.
There's so much to becoming a certified teacher, and it's a lot of confusion. It'd be nice to have.
There are a lot of requirements, a lot of requirements. So I think they provided this guidance.
Excuse me.
Mr. Palmer, go ahead.
I think that Mr. Taylor here in our county are quite familiar with this program. So we already have some type of contact with that program.
Okay, excellent.
Somewhere in the county.
That would help.
I remain with you because I, me and Mr. Carter and I worked together with it before coming. Actually, one of my former students that graduated from the 2013 is now teaching at Compton now as a special education teacher for the division, so he does work.
So it's a good program. It's out there.
And he went back home.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, went back home.
Mr. Nichols, seems that this is something that the board has interest in, and I don't think it takes the board.
Doesn't take action, we can move forward.
So, okay.
What grade do we recruit them in?
I'm sorry, second.
What grade do we recruit them into this program?
Eighth grade.
Well, eighth grade is where it starts to sort of generate that interest and kind of, you know, acclimate them to a college life.
So they couldn't enter it in their junior year?
No, sir. I think they're looking specifically for seniors to actually become a part of that program, but I think they mentor them along, but the senior year is the year that really.
But they could enter in their senior program even if they weren't in it in the eighth grade?
Yes.
I mean, do you start in eighth grade and move all the way through it, or can you join along the way?
I've had students that were, I didn't, I didn't start in eighth grade for myself. Um, I've also, my students were juniors and some seniors to try to get them into the mentality of college and try to get into the Call Me Mister program. But last year, for example, I sent mostly rising ninth grader, well, not rising, tenth grader to the program, and they're being mentored by that young man that's in the school now to stay in the program.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you just put?
I'm sorry to cut across you now.
No, you're fine.
Madam Clerk, these two items, so we don't forget, can you have those tentative put on our agenda for next month for an update, for information, as the Call Me Mister program as well as the? Teach for Tomorrow, teacher?
Teacher Scholar, Teachers for Tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
That way, we can have an update and stay on track with this. Continue, Ms. Alga.
So finally, we have a possible, possible solution for immediate needs, and that has to do with the signing bonus. I think, as I showed you in the previous slide, we were successful with signing bonuses. This past year, we offered $2,500 with $1,500 being paid in their first August check. And it was a two-year commitment, and so they'll get the $1,000 in the August check for this upcoming school year. So it, we have to define historically difficult or hard to fill because we can't offer that bonus to everyone, depending on the amount, I would assume. Just looking at last year's bonus, giving you that information. Consider the terms. Do you want it to be a one-year bonus, one time? Do you want to get the advantage of additional years by saying, we'll give you this bonus, but you owe us two years, and if you leave us, you have to pay us back? So there are some considerations, some points that you need to consider when you are making a determination about how to move forward with signing bonus. And then I think more importantly, or most importantly, is taking into account our current teachers because it is a situation where they look at it and wonder why they are not able to take advantage of a bonus program. So I think that that's part of the consideration you have to make as well. And then finally, I've given you information on Region Eight. I pulled all the divisions. They sent me everything except for Amelia and Greensville. So other than Prince Edward, they are offering a $2,500 bonus for specific areas, and they do require just a one-year commitment. We'd be the only other school division in the region that would offer that bonus. But again, looking at our salary scales, the bonus sort of offsets some of that painful, low salary scale that we have. Thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions?
Is it possible that we could up the 25 to 3,000 and let that be the two-year? Do 1,500 one year and 1,500 the next year?
That would be a board decision, but I think, you know.
Yeah, Ms. Bailey, not Ms. Bailey, Ms. Garner. It can be increased, apologize for that, Ms. Bailey. It can be increased to any amount that the board so chooses, as long as, through the Finance Committee, the funding is there. So probably through the Finance Committee, probably need to have that conversation. And it's the pleasure of the board, we have two choices. We have the EPI program that can give us immediate teachers as well as the option of the bonus. Either way, we're going to have to decide February. I think Ms. Alga has a March recruitment.
Yes, I do.
Here at Central Office.
Our internal recruitment will be March 23rd here in this room for recruiting for the upcoming school year, hopefully to get ahead of contracts going out in neighboring divisions.
So it would be beneficial that Ms. Alga has that information either through bonus or EPI so we can fill our needs for next year.
Question.
Mr. Edwards?
Are we traveling up to Pennsylvania and some of these outer states and trying to recruit from these people in person? I mean.
We have registered for Perk, which is Pittsburgh.
Okay. When will we go there?
March 26th, 27th, and 28th. It's a one day, but it's a seven-hour drive.
Right. Like Liberty University, some of those? Are we going to all of those colleges? Or how many are we going to?
In Pitt, in, I think I have eight or so that I've signed up for. I know I've signed up for Virginia State. I've signed up for Longwood, for Radford, for Lynchburg, for Perk, for, um.
I just.
I gave Mr. Nichols the list and didn't bring it with me.
If you call, if you, if you look at Vance County and Granville, they recruit heavy out of Pennsylvania, and a lot of those teachers stay there when they come down here because they like the South. But they're getting a good return on their money for going up there. I just wondered if we were doing.
I just do the Pittsburgh one. I know that they do a circuit. They can do Pittsburgh, Buffalo, Syracuse, on around down to Philadelphia and then come back. It's like a two-week recruiting venture. Um, I'm a homebody girl. I go to Pittsburgh and come back. But if the directive is to go make the circuit up north, I'll be happy to do that. You just let me know. I don't know that I've exceeded the time limit for registering, but I can certainly check into it if that's what you'd like.
The, uh.
How about the?
Well, Mr. Richie?
Our, I got a feeling our experience with Pennsylvania teachers has not been that they stay very long because, from my experience with Pennsylvania teachers, you know, it's a union state, so they don't get an automatic job up there. They come, they go somewhere, get a couple of years of experience, and then they get back to Pennsylvania.
Yes, sir.
And the ones that I've known down here, I've met, are steady trying to get back to Pennsylvania. So I think they're more just a stopgap.
Well, when you go to Pittsburgh, it's 250 school divisions from across, from around the world. There's China. I mean, they are, that room, it's a convention center. It's just loaded with school divisions. So last, not last year, that, last year was across from Roanoke, believe it or not. The year before that, I was across from Bakersfield, California. And so the gentleman, we, for a long time, we just kind of stood there because we had no one coming by our table. And he said, just give them a couple of hours. After they hit all the Pittsburgh schools, they'll realize that they are not going to get jobs here in Pennsylvania, so they'll come see us. And sure enough, the afternoon gets a lot busier. But we typically are not that successful in recruiting from those events because people don't want to commit in March. They want to see if they might get something close to home. So we collect resumes. I did make copies and those out to our principals, and if they see anyone that they think would be a good fit, then they contact them. But we typically have not gotten a good return on our investment. It's cost, that's the costliest of all of the, other than Howard University. I went there once, and that was not productive at all.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, two question. One, do you go into the Carolinas in recruiting?
UNCG, I'm sorry.
And then the second is, when you go around recruiting, do you, would it be a tight program where you could invite some of the teachers, the younger teachers that have just got into the county to travel with you, that they may would have a rapport with some of these students that are at some of these colleges and universities?
Absolutely. Last year, when I went to Lynchburg College, I took Cameron Hawkins with me. She had just recently graduated. She knew a lot of the students. We interviewed, so she had a good time doing the, you know, conducting interviews with me. We knew all the professors. So that was a great, great experience for both of us, I think. So, yes, sir. I've invited Larry Savage, who is a VSU graduate. He played basketball at VSU. I've asked him if he would go there because he's a young black male, and I think that he would be very successful, even though they only have a very limited number. I think that they do try to invite local colleges to participate as well. So there will be some folks around, but yes, sir. It is helpful.
And not just Virginia State, but going on down into Carolina, there's quite a few universities that's down in there.
Yes, sir.
To take someone, not necessarily they have to graduate from there, but that would be ideal. But it's just the fact of taking a young person with you to some of these schools may be of help to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Winston-Salem is the largest historically black college that I've been to. I didn't have a lot of success there. I believe that Mr. Watson went there and so shared the experience of having someone from Mecklenburg that actually attended Winston-Salem University, so state university. UNCG and North Carolina A&amp;T actually combined their job fairs last year, which was fabulous. This year, they separated them out again, and so I missed the window for getting into the North Carolina A&amp;T, but.
Is Fayette State have that big program that they used to have?
I, I don't know. I, most schools don't have much of an education program anymore, so recruiting is really tough. And they join forces to try to get recruiters to come.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just, Mrs. Alga, I know that our letters of intent have gone out. What is the deadline for those? And have we received a lot of those?
Wednesday. Wednesday close of business.
Okay, have we already received a lot of those?
Four hundred and eighty-six is what I've received by, when I looked at it earlier this afternoon. So I'm still waiting on some. I have about six or eight that have indicated they won't be returning. No real surprises, though.
Okay, and are those, I mean, key classes such as math and English and?
I'd prefer not to say Mr. Hunkett.
Okay.
We're good.
No matter what, I think Ms. Alga is saying we're going to have to look at other options, EPI, bonuses, more heavy recruitment, and this board is going to decide what are those options? If we're willing to pay money for recruitment, that's what we have to decide as a board. Give Ms. Alga all the tools she needs to be successful in her recruitment. If that's all, Ms. Alga, Mr. Nichols, we'll be moving on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Alga. One instructional item that I want to bring to the attention of the board, good news, and it actually is a good segue into moving on to work with Mr. Upton and his team on an update on the new school project, is that in conversations that we have had with Microsoft about the new school, one of the areas that they are very interested in working with us and supporting is moving into some renewable energy options. And Cypress Creek Renewables has actually come to the table now and is issuing us a grant that would be, and there'll be more details at the February meeting, but would be in excess, as I've talked with them, of $100,000 to help us with putting solar panels in and a solar curriculum for students who want to go into renewable energy options, which is in good timing with the community college because they, too, are looking at that as something that we would be able to partner with them on. So there will be more information about that. I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board because it may be something that they bring up next week, next Monday, with the Board of Supervisors at their meeting. So I don't want them to get the information before you do, but we'll have more information at the, at our February meeting. So the next item that I wanted to bring to your attention is with Mr. Upton. He's had some updates that they have brought to the table for our school and looking at the overall plans. A couple of classrooms have been recommended by them to be moved internally, to be closer to where they need to be. They think that will be beneficial long-term as well as short-term. We have had a chance to look with them and agree, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then there's also been issue that has come up with, I think it's the National Historic Register about. about survey for the area, and they're gonna give us a chance to talk and give us that information. So, Mr. Upton?
So great to be with you. I'm Bill Upton. I think most of you know who I am, and I'm delighted to be here with such a great group of ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you and Mr. Nichols and all the board. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and we want to report to you and be prepared to answer any questions you have about the progress of your school. What we've done is to put a copy of the floor plan and the site plan in front of you so you can look at that in more detail and take it with in-market and better keep up with any questions that might be beneficial to manage at one time or another. What I'm gonna do, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna get Mr. Evans and Mr. Carroll to talk about the site plan and the floor plan adjustments, changes. And what we need to do really at this stage is lock down everything. So we're so close, I feel good about it. We need to, if we don't have what you want on the site, let's make sure we do it tonight and we understand and we're gonna do it and we're gonna do exactly what you instruct us to do, of course, as we've always committed. So after they talk to you a little bit about the site plan and the building floor plan, I want to come and talk to you, as Mr. Nichols said, about the historic resources involved in that, it's both the Corps of Engineers and the Virginia Historic Society. So a little glitch has popped up there that we need to deal with, and we will tell you what they've said and what we intend to do to resolve it. And we do usually have a plan if we can have a short period of time. So we've worked hard and met with them, and we think that things will work out okay. And we will make those proposals to you, see how you feel about it. So first of all, I got Mr. Evans and Mr. Carroll to go over the site plan and including, you know, anything to make sure that, Sam, when you leave here, we want you to go forward one hundred percent and finish the project, hopefully. So if you have anything that's lingering in your mind, please put it on the table now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board, and Mr. Nichols. What I'd like to do is just go over a few things with you as we have moved from the design development phase into the construction documents. There's been various adjustments and tweaks to both the floor plan and the site plan. So what I will do is start off and kind of go through some things that have taken place since this period and just point out several things on the site plan so that everybody has a real good idea of what's going on. And don't hesitate to stop me during any of this if you've got any particular questions, but I just want to make sure that everybody has a clear idea of what to expect and where we are. I'll start off in the very back, over here on the high school side. We've got the baseball field here with lighting, and we're not planning on putting any irrigation on that particular field. Next to it is the softball field. We're gonna do some lighting and no irrigation. Then we've got this roadway...
Sorry to, excuse me, why wouldn't you irrigate a baseball field?
Well, that's not what's in the plan right now, but if you decide that that's something you want to do, then that's what we want you to tell us tonight so we can determine how we move forward.
Okay, I didn't know how you, I just noticed some of them, some of the fields had irrigation in them.
Right. Some of them we have planned to do that way since day one. But if you are opposed to some of these design ideas and concepts, we want to know from you tonight if that's something you just feel like you have to have, and then we'll try to figure out how we can make that happen. Okay?
There have been some talk about like an irrigation wheel that can be taken out there for irrigation, which is just a portable thing that they can use. They can just pull it out there.
Okay. And that's certainly a possibility. But when I mention irrigation, that's something that would be permanent, installed in the ground and so on. And those things are generally pretty expensive. It, a lot of things come into play, and Sam can address some of that a little further if you've got other questions. But it comes down to volume of water and several things. Probably water quality issues, I would assume, too. So then, as we continue on, this is a proposed future field which could be used for practice football and soccer and what have you. So our plan right now is that would just be graded out, rough grade, but we would not put in the field markings or anything like that at this point. In addition, there's a extension of this roadway that would come over with a little bit of parking for that field in the future. And also, as the sidewalk is shown running up beside the football field and track, there would be an extension of a sidewalk that would take you over there, too. And that's also indicated as future expansion of the sidewalk, or extension, rather. Then we had discussed, I think at our last meeting, this was where the existing tennis courts would have gone, but we determined that you didn't really have a big need for tennis courts now, and we were gonna try to take the funds for that and put those towards the barn and greenhouses. Okay? As we come down, we've got obviously the practice soccer field, and it is gonna have irrigation, but no lighting. Then we've got over here the football field, track. Of course, the visitor and home side grandstands as well as the field house. And the particular football field, track, and lighting, will have lighting, but it's gonna have artificial turf.
Now, Mr. Evans, excuse me, if Mr. Evans says what's gonna have, what he means to say is that's what we're planning to do with your permission. And if you direct us otherwise, it's gonna have what you want to have.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Yes, sir. You said, "artificial turf."
Right.
So what happens if we just went with a regular grass field there and were able to irrigate it and the baseball and the softball field? Would, i- is there a lot of cost difference in that turf versus natural grass? I mean, that we would have out in place?
Well, there would be a difference in cost. I don't know what that exact dollar amount would be right now. Sam, do you have a feel for that?
Uh, no, not off the top of my head.
The upfront cost for the turf is quite a bit more. It does save money and maintenance and care down the road because you do have to take care of it. But it does require a high level of maintenance, and it does allow for a lot more repetitive use.
I guess my, my only concern would be we're building this nice shiny new school on the hill and, you know, ratty-looking softball and baseball fields with no irrigation. And you know how the summers can be in this area, can be horribly dry, horribly hot. So I'm saying if we could, the cost comparison with the turf versus the regular grass, where we could irrigate all three, take some of that money and divide it out and to be able to irrigate our fields and, you know, maintain them and keep them up.
That's funny.
And that's, that's just a comment.
Mr. Nichols, go ahead.
Well, it is, and it's a conversation that has been had in the past Athletic Committee meetings with athletic directors and other coaches and whatnot. They actually stated, as Mr. Storven alluded to, that they prefer the irrigation programs that are not built in, but that they can pull to the fields because they feel like in the long term, that serves them better than to put the underground systems that pop up. And so that came as a recommendation from those persons in those meetings to have that type of irrigation as opposed to the ones built in.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. ...
Just a quick statement. Another thing, you know, we've got to get to a point where we can bid this school and get it in under budget so we can get started. And if we come in under budget and we have money left over, then the board can go ahead and decide to add these things. But until we get this, this base down that we need to do and bid this thing and find out where we really are, you know, we're like, we keep adding things and then it comes in and goes over budget. Now we're in real trouble. If we butt off, I mean, I feel to do as the budget requires by the architects, and let's try to bid it, if it comes in under budget, then we can start adding because we'll know how much money we have under that 120 million or whatever. Just my suggestion.
Well, you're exactly right. And like Mr. Nichols just said, we, we've been trying to move ahead with this to implement the things that it seems like the majority of the folks want to put on the site. So again, if there's anything in particular that I'm going over today that you really feel like you'd like to see changed, certainly all you need to do is just let us know, and we'll certainly take a look at it and try to accommodate you in any way we can.
Just a comp...
Ms. Bailey?
I noticed there's a building that's marked "High School Baseball Field House."
Yes.
Is there, are there, is there a female version of that?
Female.
You're talking about this right here?
Yes, sir. That's labeled "High School Baseball Field House."
Yes. Basically, that, that building contains male and female toilet facilities.
Toilet facilities.
Yeah, and it has a small little concessions area inside.
Okay.
There's a little bit of storage as well.
So then it, so they will, and that's got storage in it, you said?
Yes, that's, it's not a locker room. It's, it's just male and female toilet facilities.
So neither, neither baseball nor softball has any locker area?
Not in that building.
Okay.
And that, just to jump ahead, that would be the same thing over here at the middle school side.
Okay.
Those two would be exactly the same building.
And does the football area have a locker facility?
Yes. Right here at the high school football field, we have, right beside the bleachers, we have a field house here. And it does have the locker room facilities.
That could be used.
That could be used because it's, it's got a home and visitor side, you know, boys and girls and facilities and so on.
Coaches, referees.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Now, Mr. Hucat, if we provide the host bed so that there's water, that they could use a manual sprinkler, is that okay to go forward now? And then if we have the resources to come back and...
Again, that would be fine. And the only reason why I commented on that, I do realize that we're getting ready to put this out to bid contractually. And I just know that in talking with some friends whose children go to high schools away from Mecklenburg County that have the turf fields, there are pros and cons with both of that. And it is very expensive, and the upkeep over the years can be very astronomical as well. And again, that's just getting information whose kids participate on those tight fields.
There's pros and cons to everything.
Yes, sir.
The turf fields are very high. It's gonna be some things based on research and where old people get help, certainly with some of the conditions that have been listed in the old places.
Thank you.
There's still pros and cons.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Getting back to those, excuse me, Mr. Palmer. Get back to those two buildings that Ms. Bailey pointed out. It's gonna be essential that there's both a boys' and girls' locker changing room that football, softball, all those sports can use. Also, will they be heated with AC, central air?
I know they're heated. I can't remember. I believe they are also conditioned, but I'll have to double-check that.
That's gonna be important because during the summertime, it's brutal. And seeing that this is a new facility, both of those should be heated with central air and heat.
The fall can be just...
I think they are, but I'll have to verify that. But I'll get back to you and let you know for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
My comment was somewhat similar to Mr. Edwards here. We have to get to a point where we can move on with this thing. We can't keep changing, changing. If we continue doing that, now, don't get me wrong. If there is something major that we see here that we need to change, then yes. But for the most part, I agree with Mr. Edwards here. We, we don't want to continue to drag this thing on into more years than we want to be.
Right. And I think, Mr. Palmer, what has happened, there has been changes that didn't come from the board. And that's why we're getting an update on those changes that have occurred since the last time we've seen this because there have, there have been some changes since the board has seen it last.
There's been a few little tweaks to the plan, but primarily, most everything is, is still where, what we had. But we have had to adjust a few little locations because one of the things we're trying to do is keep the facilities out of the wetlands and off the creeks and streams to help with all the issues we're dealing with right now.
And so what you're looking for tonight is after you go through it, then as an understanding, no more changes, you move forward, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And if there are any changes that you all made that we're not aware of, can you pinpoint that so we will...
Yes, Sam...
That should be the main thing that we do first here then, if that's the case, is to pinpoint those things that were changed.
Right. Most of the things that you're looking at now on the site, I think, are primarily what you've seen many times before. There may be a few little nuances we've made. Like, I'm not sure if you've noticed over here that we did add a fueling station where you can fuel two vehicles at one time. So it will also have a cover over it to protect from inclement weather. And we've got some parking right here for these fields on the middle school side. We also have added, I believe, a little more parking for the middle school side of the building here. And I believe you're aware of some of the tweaks we've made to the entrance and the stacking space here, but I'll let Sam go over some of that with you. And also, some of the issues that we've been dealing with as far as getting traffic in and out of the site for buses and students. I know at one point, this faculty parking was up here at the front, and then we moved it to the back, so it's a little bit closer to the entrance of the cafeteria. So basically, those are the biggest things that we've changed, I think, since you've seen the plan.
So let me jump in real quick, Eddie. When we met in December and went over the site plan, a lot of what Eddie just said was on here in December. The only change since December, really, has been the ag building, which was at list as future back here. Now it's in the project and located right there. And then a greenhouse here, and just as recently as this afternoon, we've added another greenhouse on the other side of the road. And then the tennis courts, they were in the project in December. They were taken out of the project. Everything else, I just didn't want y'all to get confused. This is exactly how it was in December.
Now, Sam, comment on this future field for upgrading, that future field for upgrading. So they, like, exactly, if that's gonna move back and change.
Okay, good point. In December, these were listed as in, in the project now. Since then, what we're planning on doing is exactly what it's saying here. We're upgrading future only. Basically, we're gonna get the area, it'll, it'll look relatively level. It'll be a field you can run around, play on, everything, but there's not gonna be any, any lines or goalposts or anything related to that.
Question. Are we gonna laser grade those fields for drainage? I mean, we're gonna go ahead and, because at South Hill Elementary School, that was supposed to have been done in the original contract. And when the general contractor went broke, we didn't get that back, that whole back field wasn't laser graded. You know, so it holds water and it's a real mess. I just wondered if we're gonna get this so we've got drainage on these fields, you know?
Yes, using a laser or actually on the grading project of this size, it's more probably gonna be GPS equipment.
Right, right, that's right.
And everything. Any contractor doing this level of, of work is using equipment like that.
Right.
And if there's any question about the level of the field, we can always ask Bill to survey and make sure it was built properly.
Yeah, we, I, that's just one thing that, that's one of the mistakes we made at South Hill Elementary School, and we've paid for it, you know, because we actually had to get Jamie Barker to go back and do a lot of work to that field just to get the holes and the ruts out of it after we, after everybody abandoned us. I know that's not gonna happen this time, but, you know, it's just a question. I think we caught any boogaloo again.
I have another concern.
Sorry?
I have one other concern, and maybe you can answer this for me. Back up at the baseball field and softball field.
At the high school?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that's a little hike. I do see right below the baseball field, they look like that they are parking spaces there. Is that parking spaces that I'm seeing?
That's correct.
Approximately, do we know how many parking spaces right there?
Well, off the top of my head, somewhere between 40 and 50.
Okay. You know, again, just, you know, for those who maybe can't walk that distance or hike that distance from where the parking for the high school is right now, that's a good little walk. I didn't know if some of those other spaces, and I... guess that would be a warrant, uh, maybe where the future field or something would be, if we could add any additional parking spaces for those sports via baseball and softball, and again, that's just a concern.
You talking about over here?
Yes, sir.
That's a, that's a pretty good trek.
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Mr. Honeycutt, are you asking for them, or just?
Well, no, I, I just guess, uh, I'm thinking, and Sam, that's why I asked you how many you thought it was, forty or fifty, I just don't think that, you know, depending on what, if we have a tournament or, you know, whatever, um, you know, that would require more than just your typical average baseball game, you know, if we want to host those in the future, then that would be, um, a little hike for someone getting to those fields.
Ms. Bailey, Ms. Bailey, your thoughts on that, you're with the number of, I know you travel, you do a lot of baseball and softball, and what are your thoughts on the-
My thoughts are that on a campus this size, serving this many students, um, that's not an unusual walk.
Okay.
And you have to control, uh, pedestrian traffic into these events, and if the parking is here yawn everywhere, it will be difficult to even gather admission, um, for the people who are visiting the field, so as long as these, uh, bus stalls, um, the, the parking that has the buses there, as long as that's available, I think, um, that would be sufficient. Now, if there's someone in a wheelchair that needs access, you know, I, I think that, that can be managed.
They can drive up there, yes.
Uh, but I think, um, I've been to many state tournaments and regional tournaments where we had to walk a good ways, War Hill is an example.
It is, thank you, Ms. Bailey, continue on.
All right, I was just, uh, speaking to Sam too, if, if necessary, and if it would be helpful, we could always take this sidewalk and tie it in over here to this road, so if you do park in this area, you, you're not feeling like you've got to go down around, you could just kind of cut straight across and head back, so we can look at that, see if that'll work.
To, to answer your question again, um, that future field, if it's graded for the field, you certainly could park it, you'd just be parking on grass.
Correct, right, yes, sir.
We might not have a bridge across-
Yeah, we'd have to have that roadway to get there, unless you wanted to take a chance driving across the field.
Well, if, we're going to-
That's all the future.
If we're going to grade the site for future, we're going to need access anyways, so it might not be a finished road, but there could be a, you know, a gravel path.
Gravel path.
That's a good thing to point out, so I don't know how developed that'll be then, at this point.
And again, thank you, Mrs. Bailey.
My concern was for those who are handicapped who have to travel a long way, that was my concern.
Okay, all right, well, we'll certainly take another look at that and see if we can come up with anything that'll help improve the situation, okay? Um, to continue on, like Sam pointed out, this is the ag barn, and, uh, right now, we've got one greenhouse shown, but there's going to be another one right across the little roadway here, uh, this is a central plant that'll house the, uh, mechanical systems and the chillers and, and what have you, uh, cooling tower and generator and, uh, the, uh, uh-
Propane.
propane tanks will be out in this enclosed yard, uh, and that'll be enclosed with some type of fence area, uh, just to block it from visibility, uh, and like I said, this, uh, middle school side softball and baseball field, that's the field house for, for them, and, and again, that one and, and this one up here are exactly identical, and, uh, Sam, I'm, I'm going to ask Sam if he'll just kind of go over with you a little bit, some of the things that, that we've had to develop, uh, for this entryway into the site.
So, as part of the traffic study that was done, uh, in preparation for this project, it discussed primarily the improvements required along Highway fifty-eight, and improvements needed, I mean, out on the fifty-eight, it was all based around Highway fifty-eight, essentially, because VDOT didn't really have jurisdiction to require anything to be done along Wooden Bridge Road, or a study to be done along there, didn't mean improvements didn't need to be made. So, as part of that, what we've been working on the past few months is nailing down what would be required to get the appropriate turn lanes in and out of the school and taper lanes, uh, coming from this direction, and I believe we've made our most recent submission just last week to VDOT, and as soon as we hear back, we think we're going, they're going to accept everything we have proposed. Part of that is reducing the speed on Wooden Bridge, which I believe is unposted right now, so it means it's fifty-five miles an hour, you can't make these turns safely at fifty-five miles an hour, so we're going to have, we've put in a request, the county has approved it and sent the VDOT to do a speed study on the one mile of this road starting at this intersection, heading away from it, and in the area of the school, reducing it to thirty-five miles per hour. That helps us, uh, for a few reasons, not only, one, does it make it safer, but, two, thirty-five mile an hour doesn't require as long of turn lanes, so that reduces our area of impact that we have to do on the project. So, fortunately, our improvements, right now, are starting right at where the existing West Cross Road is, and, uh, I believe it's Old Cox, did it right, um, and so we'll just be working from that intersection back to fifty-eight.
So, that same, that entrance still has that same turn in it, weren't they going to-
So, that, this is the existing road right here with that odd angle coming back around.
Okay.
What we're proposing is a new entrance right here, so it's more at ninety degrees to the road than what's required by the state.
I got you.
They don't want you to be more than ten degrees out of, uh, perpendicular with that.
Sam, please point out, if you don't mind, I believe, uh, we, when we talked before, we were just this piece of property here.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, we're going to have to take a little bit of the corner here, and a little bit of the corner, another piece of property here, what do we need to do there, uh, we need to let the Lord know so those properties can be worked out.
So-
Landowners, right?
That's correct, uh, so as part of this, uh, review process we're doing with VDOT, now that we've nailed down the, uh, two-dimensional geometry of the improvements, and have that approved, then we'll grade it out to see what the impact of the grading is, and then from there, we can generate, uh, right-of-way acquisition plaits, that'll need to be done. This road, uh, you can kind of see, uh, right, this is the right-of-way line, which is the property line, right here that cuts over and then comes back, that was all acquired back when the fifty-eight, uh, project was done, everything else is what's called a prescriptive right-of-way, it means there's no, the property owners own to the middle of the road. VDOT had, in the county, owned a thirty-foot prescriptive right-of-way on top of, means basically the homeowner gets, they own the property, they get to pay the taxes on it, but they just have no say over it, and it's fifteen feet from the center of the road. Well, if you improve the road at all, you have to actually purchase, uh, the property, it's only intended to, for maintenance of the existing road, and so what we're required to do here are improvements, so we're going to have to buy, uh, oh, acquire property from both sides, uh, of Wooden Bridge Road up to West Cross. In some areas, it might be, um, it'll be a minimum of twenty-five feet, because you've got to buy from the center of the road, uh, on, probably on this east side, and on this, uh, west side, might be a little bit more, and then as Mr. Upton pointed out, at the turns, there'll be a little bit more necessary there, and then on this piece of property here, uh, just a little corner of it, right there, so we hope to, it'll probably be within the next, uh, one to two months, have those plaits ready, uh, to be, so you can approach the, uh, property owners and discuss with them about it.
Thank you, Sam.
Mm-hmm.
So, as, as Sam indicated, uh, once he gets the plaits drawn up, we'll know exactly what, uh, impact that's going to have on the property owner, so, uh, we'll then be able to share with you exactly, uh, how much area is involved, and, and, uh, we'll know exactly where we've got to go from there, okay? Does anybody have any other questions regarding the site plan right now?
Ms. Palmer?
Um, Mr. Nichols brought up the thing about the solar, where would we have the solar panels on this, or would they work with you to decide and hide all this?
That's, that's a question that we, I've, I've mentioned to Sam that we were looking at what might be available for some of that to take place, and there's some suggestions in this lower end down in here that might be available.
There, there's a good area over in here, I think would be suitable for it, and, possibly-
I bet that falls back a little bit.
Yeah, the, the best location is probably going to be back in here, so that's something we'll work with the, uh, solar company and figure out what's, what's best for them in terms of the sun hitting the panels and then-
It's, it's, the, the request and the support is not given from the idea of taking care of all of the megawatt needs of the facility, but being more of a training, so we could determine how much or how little would be available for that purpose.
I was just wondering where they bid it-
Right.
-footprint they, they have here.
Right.
Okay, any other questions about the site?
No.
All right, Bill, did you have anything else you wanted to address on the site?
No, what, uh, what I think we're going to do, based on the comments that we've heard, we're going to go full steam ahead of, uh, after Sam said, I'm really, I say, he doesn't like to talk to me anymore, and so he says, honey, we don't want to buy more property, we don't, do you, and make it work, and he's worked very hard on his, uh, I guess I'm going to have to leave him alone now, let's go ahead and get it finished now, but, uh, I think he can have a really good site, and you're going to have good potential for future fields, but these fields will be, uh, fields that if you need it, you could go out and put chalk on, and if, and you make sure we get good drainage, or a little spot or anything like that, and, and it's not really hurting us so much to, to do the upgrade, because we need salt back on the roadside, so it's all, I'm coming down with lots of them, so I think, uh, I think I'm hearing that we are okay to go to the final destination with this.
So, board consensus, yes.
Yes. You guys are great.
Thank you.
I love you so much. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about, uh, the historic resources, about some things.
Yeah.
Bill, you won't be giving the background of why we're talking about historical resources?
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
You want this part?
Sure.
Now, Sam's going to introduce historic resources, because he goes through his review.
Well, I want to make sure everybody understands why the Department of Historical Resources is even involved in this project, so, back at the beginning of the project, uh, we did two things, uh, we obtained aerial topographic survey of the site, and we also did wetland and stream delineation on the site, uh, as a result of that, we found out there's, and it's not shown on here, but a lot of the areas where there are still trees at, basically, it wasn't suitable for farming, it's because there's, there's a stream there, uh, the topography drops off and doesn't really allow for it, there's also pockets of, uh, wetlands, these are streams and wetlands that by definition, uh, are determined from the Army Corps of Engineers Wetland and Stream Delineation Manual, so it's not just a matter of one person's opinion versus another person's opinion, uh, it's a very methodical process, uh, we have very well-trained staff that go out and determine what is, uh, wetland or streams, and then that is then reviewed and approved or denied by the Army Corps, so it's a thorough process that narrows down, uh, exactly what is wetland and streams on your site. So, we did that, and then as part of this project, we determined that we've got streams running up through the site, we've got a wetland pocket over here, uh, all those impacts, um, push us over a threshold that require what's called an individual permit, so, in doing so, that involves multiple, uh, state and federal government agencies, uh, there, there are certain permits that are very easy to obtain, you're impacting a small amount, you can get it no problem, takes about three months, and you're good to go. There's another level, takes about, still not really a problem, uh, to get, obtain, takes about four to six months, and then there's the individual permit, and that can take up to a year, and this project, we expect it to take about six months, and we're going to tie that into with the design, the time period of the design of the project. This is one of the reasons Bill has been, uh, pressing about nailing down the site, because we don't know exactly what the impacts are until we know what the site is, and now that we know what the site is, we can prepare those impact drawings, get them submitted to the state and federal agencies, and start that process, which, again, takes about six months, I hope we'll have a permit in hand come about the first of August, and be ready for, you know, groundbreaking at the end of August, which is our current schedule, correct? All right, good. Um, with that process, as I said, it's multiple state and federal agencies that get involved, you would think it's just a stream, maybe just the people with EPA or something like that that are involved with the stream itself, and that would be it, but unfortunately not, uh, you know, Department of Agriculture, Department of Forestry, uh, and Department of Historical Resources, all those get involved with this, and Department of Historical Resources is always seems to be the hangup, because you wonder, why do I have to be involved, get involved at all with them, about maybe an old barn back here to get a permit to impact a stream over here, but unfortunately, that's, that's how the process works, so, um, any, any questions with that?
What about the cemetery?
That, that's a part of it too.
Oh, okay.
Have, real quick, Ms. Palmer, I'm glad you asked that, and Mr. Upton, or Sam, maybe, the family of the cemetery, do you all know who those persons are?
Yes.
So, you have been in contact with that family about moving?
No, not contact with the family yet, no.
Okay.
That's a part of the process, uh-
Because it was my understanding that nobody knew who the family was, the original owners didn't know who the family was.
I have some information on the family, but what we have to do is to comply with your requirements of historic resources, and what the family says is okay not, we still have to go through and get their approval, and that's why I'm going to show you a couple things-
That's something that-
...I tried to do to, to hopefully advance the process.
That's something that you will be just taking care of, and, and once that's done, you're bringing back to us, right?
Yes, sir, I have a little bit of information for you on that, but yes.
Yes, sir.
It's in our ballpark to go follow, when Sam submits us, it's going to go to the Corps, Corps is going to communicate with Department of Resources, we've already jumped the gun and started communicating with Department of Historic Resources, Eddie and Miss Evans and I went down this morning and talked to them, and trying to see if we could expedite the process a little bit, kind of like what we were trying to do with VDOT, trying to work with them, so we're trying to do the same thing, so they promised us, and I, and I have some pictures here, maybe I should show you some of those, last, uh, last week we had a conversation, so I went down and did a photographic study of the properties to try to take this information and go to, uh, Historic Resources, which Miss Evans and I did this morning, and we were trying to convince them, uh, they still have that system they're going through, but these are not, in my opinion, really historic properties, but, you know, they want you to go to and get it designated by a certified historian and all that stuff, so we, we were trying, so what we agreed with them is that after going through these photographs and talking about it, we're going to send them a copy of these photographs tomorrow, and they're going to start to look at those, and hopefully they will start to, uh, see it their way, hopefully, but we don't know for sure, they probably still make us D.R.T.s, now, they tell us that for them to review anything, anything, it takes thirty days, so what we were trying to do is to jump ahead of the official a little bit and get our foot in the door, so if we submit these tomorrow, they said our thirty-day countdown can start, so hopefully, we can get their review a little quicker when it comes from the Corps, hopefully, you know, which is kind of at their mercy in a lot of this, so what we did, and all of you, I think, have seen this home, it's, it's, it's a tons of home, and it's in real bad shape, I wanted to show them things like, you know, it had electricity, it's got vines growing through the house, if you look at the brick, you can see it's not historic brick, anyone that understands history will see that's not the old sand brick or what you would get from a historic home, so I tried to give them a good feel, that's a picture of the porch there, another one, and you can see it's in bad shape, it has electricity in the hole, uh, that's the inside, and it's upside down, that's the floor, uh, there's a TV for, uh, offered it to Sam, but he wouldn't take it, I don't know why, but you can see it's really in bad shape, but it, you know, it has electricity, and again, we wanted them to see that it was, uh, not something that was of ancient times, uh, in terms of history, uh, this is right beside the house just in the woods, and this is a little bit back from where the tennis courts are, so I said, you know, if we are in the process, and you guys are not making up your mind, can we just isolate this area so we can go ahead and start with our construction, and they indicated yes, so we- So we think, under worse conditions, we can still not be barricaded in terms of moving the project forward. So I think that would work. So, and then back behind here, that's the porch, you can see the house, it's just, I mean, it's really, really in bad shape. Now, right behind the house, maybe a couple hundred feet, there's, it's hay, it was a hay barn or, I don't know what, it's used for before that, probably had, but it's really dilapidated and falling apart, and it's just almost completely on the ground. So I took pictures of that and I showed them that, and they seemed to agree that it's nothing there that is logical to try to salvage. And then after that, I went down to the cemetery, and on the cemetery, I was looking for dates and looking for history, trying to see, because it didn't seem that it was that old. The newest grave on there was 19, the person died in 1958. Now, I did a little research on the family just today, and I found out this, Paul, oh, this is the oldest person here, this was John Tisdale, the father, he was born 1825 and died in 1898. He was the father of the other two graves, and that was a brother and sister, brother Paul and sister Virginia. And so, so all three of them were buried. Now, their, his father, John's father was Tunstall as well, he was born in Mecklenburg and buried in a Tisdall family grave in Grand Hill County, North Carolina. So, so it doesn't look like they went back a long ways. There is something that we are concerned about. Two other things, real quick. I tried to get all the pictures of the dates and names there so I could take it to them, but I don't think this is going to create a problem other than going through all the red tape and the hassle. The problem is, and I told the people at Historic Society, I said, "The county's trying to use their money wisely to build schools, to build places to educate children, and you're gonna make us spend all this money for space that you can see is not viable, so why are you gonna make the county spend their money that they need to spend on students?" So, they agree with me, but it all ends up kind of the same. So we think we can get the Phase One study done, driven, sound crazy, and he's got three different prices, so then we're trying to pick the person that we like the best and try to get the best price for them, and not do the full study, but do the Phase One, so we can get through the Corps of Engineers, and then I think we can get through the Department of Historic Resources. They seem to have the most interest. I'm sorry, I don't have a slide of, but this is your property here, and the plot of property right down here, around 58, lower portion, is what they're calling archaeological site, it's gonna identify, and most times they use the word possible, maybe, could be, that kind of stuff, archaeological site. We said, "Well, what if we just designate that?"
Yeah.
Not of non-construction, you're not talking. Good, yes, right down there, as you can see, we're, we're at Sam's point. If we can designate that area as not part of site, whatever we have to do, then maybe that'll make everybody happy, then that'll leave the other things alone, so I'm thinking too, if we trade that, that won't cost us anything, hurt us, other than we can't even build them, but can't build them in with historic site, and then instead, so I think we can do a little bargaining back and forth, preserve that. There are, what catches their attention when they did the finding around 58, somebody identified that, that's the reason. There are archaeological sites around, you know, could be anything, somebody's gonna add a head to this, a major situation. You know, the other thing that may be a possibility, the home is gone, Sam, you know something about that thing. Close to the cemetery, there was, we believe, the original Tunstall home that has been moved and destroyed. I don't think they're gonna try to say that's historic, and we need to save the foundation. If they did, it would be very annoying, very troublesome, but it's possible. So what we would try to do then, on the worst case, it's the worst-case scenario, is to isolate those areas and say, "We're not gonna construct over them, we'll just keep them there and let them live."
Mr. Abden, if they find arrowheads down that area, can we build a casino there and fund our schools?
Well, I asked, I asked it later, they wanted to be a smart aleck, but I said, "Maybe we get the Corps of Engineers to reevaluate whether, but down there should be the, because that's full of historic arrowheads all around the dam there, and of course, I can eat the islands, so, I mean, you're talking about archaeological sites, of course, that was a long time ago, and things have changed." So anyway, we have these problems we're working with, we're trying to jump on them, and we're trying to deal with them to minimize the impact of cost to you, and also to keep things tracking that, where we have no choice to go through the protocol. So Sam is going to meet with Corps of Engineers, if he needs anything from us, we're gonna team with him, we're going back to the Historic Society, so we're working this as hard as possible.
Mr. Edwards.
I have a question, Mr. Abden. Getting off-site, do we know how much problem we're gonna have with some of these same issues putting that pipeline into Boyd? You know, you know, I know that's a hard one for you, because nobody knows that either, but, you know, we could run into some of these issues, too, if we get off the, out of the, out of the highway right away and have to get over into these, some of these areas. I mean, you're the engineers, so I don't know, I just ask.
I don't believe you're gonna have nearly the issues that you are with the site.
Okay.
You know, I mentioned before about three tiers of permits.
Right.
The amount of impacts, and I'm not privy to that exactly, that is along 58, but it's gonna be a couple of creek crossings, I'm sure, and there-
If you look at-
I just didn't want to finish the school, and we didn't have a sewer land.
Here, there's a point beyond that site, towards that hill, it's right against-
Right.
On the other side, again, it's not a problem because we're going on the, you know, so there is a site there, so there are potentially some other impact sites down the road, so the question's good, we don't have any information at this point, and we're doing a pretty clean slice there, so hopefully, it won't be a problem, but it's very possible.
If the level of impacts are kept to a minimum, it's possible they won't get to the level that requires DHR.
Right.
Well, hasn't water already been run along 58? Hasn't water already been-
Yes, on the south side of 58, yes, that was done inside the road right away, so it's within a, or a disturbed area.
And so there's not enough room there to do sewer?
No, not on the south side of 58, I think a decision was made a long time ago to go on the north side of 58.
If we could stay in the right of way there, is any possibility, you think? We need to have that conversation.
Mr., Mr. Abden, you can continue.
We, we probably need to stop talking and stuff, not to waste your time, but we're working really hard on these issues that are coming up. So far, we have a way, a good, possible way, reasonable to manage it so that we can keep the project on track.
Okay, and that's the footprint, and that's the main thing you needed from us tonight. How many changes have been done that you need to share with us on the inside of the building, if any?
Eddie, can you do a summary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it's numerous little tweaks to the plan, but I don't think it's anything that's gonna impact what you have seen before. We've done various things, such as just moving some classrooms from one side of the hall to the other and switching things around. The biggest change I can think of, and I'll jump to the second floor, is if you guys remember, initially, we had a hole in the building when we first started off right here, it was a big open courtyard. And as time went on, and trying to compact and get everything close with departments and what have you, we started carving a little bit of space out on both sides of it, and then that courtyard got smaller. Then at some point, it got to where we actually absorbed the courtyard into the building to make sure that you had all the types of facilities that you needed for your curriculum. Now, that happened on the ground floor only. Upstairs, we eventually carved a little bit of space for classrooms on both sides, and that left a little bit of pocket here, so up on the roof, it was, it was a low-slope roof, but in the middle, it had a little depression in it, and we thought it made sense to just get rid of that and just bring the roof over. So, as we thought about that a little further, we, we said, "Okay, well, if there was a way we could make it, again, a little more compact and keep everything together, and actually put some spaces in here," but again, we've been fighting the budget and trying not to enlarge the footprint of the building. So what we ended up doing is taking some classrooms on the second floor here and moving them over to this side, and then you'll notice that we used to have a bunch of classrooms along the backside on the high school, because this box right here was an open courtyard, just like the one below. So, what we did is we took the classrooms from this side, and we moved them over, same thing here, moved them over, and we were able to reconfigure these spaces in here, and then take the multipurpose rooms that we had initially put in here and put those in the middle, giving you access off of a corridor at the top and bottom of the plan, and this made for a better multipurpose room for both middle school and/or high school, depending on how you wanted to use it. So, thinking a little further, we decided, well, you know, if we could take the art classrooms and set those over here on top of the roof above the CTE classes, we would get rid of all of the space. Now, this does a couple of things for you down the road. If you decide down the road you need to expand the building and put more classrooms, instead of having to encroach out into the property where we've got parking and bus loops and roadways, now you could come back here and add possibly three to four classrooms, and over here, you could add as many as six classrooms. So this gives you some good potential for future growth without going outside the building footprint. Okay?
So it might want to compact, but it still has NTP approved divisional space that was approved earlier.
So it says there, low roof, so that's just a roof over the first floor?
That's exactly right.
And so, were we to expand?
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, we already had a second-floor structure here, so that was gonna be a floor load anyway. So we have instructed our structural engineer to design the roof load here as a second-floor load, so that in the future, all you would have to do is pull the roofing off, pour a slab on it, build your walls, and construct a roof, and then you'd have your classrooms.
And that would impact the space below at that time, or might it not?
It depends. If it's a classroom, probably not much. If you were talking about science classrooms and all, where you'd need plumbing and all, that could have an impact. But I wouldn't think it would be a big impact on just classroom spaces.
I have a question, please.
Okay.
When you move these two art rooms, is it the same space as it was before?
It's exactly the same. All we did is take, we moved them from here and placed them across the hall.
Okay, so it was the same space in the-
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Ms. Bailey, go ahead.
So I'm guessing that that roofline structure on the end is the, on the, come on down, all the way out?
Over here?
No, no, all the way over.
Over here.
All the way over and down.
Okay, down here.
No, down.
This?
And over. There we go.
Oh, yeah, that's-
That is the, the top of the ROTC space?
That's exactly right.
So that, that structure has walls?
No, that's just an open space with a roof on top of it.
Okay, and so that is a two-story space then?
It's a one-story space, but what it does have is there's a fence that encloses this. There are no walls, per se, but it's a fence that encloses it because they didn't want to have anybody to be able to gain access in or out of that area.
So why is it not a two-sto, it's not, the roof line is shown on the second-story space, just because it's from the down on it?
It's just looking down on the, yeah, that's what you would see looking down.
So it's just a one-story space?
That's right. It's more or less like a big gazebo-type picnic area you'd see at a park or something, that's essentially what you're looking at.
Thank you.
But it is required by the JROTC?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so-
The changes that you've made, it will have no impact on the type of roof that we're going to put in?
No, none whatsoever. We're still gonna use the same type roof system that we were gonna use before, it's just in a lower location now. So again, just to recap, you know, we, we made some changes in this area, we made some changes over here, we made a few changes here, and of course, you know, we've, we've adjusted and reconfigured a little bit on this floor level here. When we go back down to the first floor, again, there's been various things we've talked about, one up here in the cafeteria area, we've got a concessions area over here, and we've got the snack area in this location. One of the things that we were trying to accomplish is put some cubicles in here so students that got off the bus and came in on either side, and, and this is a mirror image on, on middle school and high school side, by the way, that students could lock up as they come into the school in the mornings, if they had something like, you know, baseball bats or gloves or what have you. Then, we have, again, adjusted some things in the central core area here. Just last week, we got through finalizing the band room, where we've increased the seating capacity in here, and we've provided both an office for middle school and high school, reconfigured the band storage spaces, and we've got two practice rooms. We have one right here, and then we have one right here. We've come over onto the middle school side, we've made some adjustments in some of the classrooms in this area, tweaked the art classroom down in this area of the CTE for the high school, we've done a few little tweaks and modifications, and, and nothing is major, a lot of it, as, as your staff has gone through and looked at it, they've come up with some last-minute things they, they felt were important, like we've made some of the doorways a little larger in some of the classrooms right off of the ag area so that as they roll carts from one space to another, they can get them into the classrooms and so on.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Nichols, all these small changes he's referring to, you've looked at all those and-
Yes, sir.
And you've stamped your approval on them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The wrestling room, weight room, is that just an open area now?
Uh, let's see here, are we talking about-
Right there.
Back here, yeah, that, that, what we've got there is that's just one big open space.
Is a wrestling room and a weight room, it's gonna have weights in there, right?
Uh, yes.
No.
We did have it divided up into two, two separate areas, but the decision was made that we could just eliminate the wall and make it a, a larger space.
For a wrestling room as well? Where did that decision come from?
Uh, I believe the decision came from Abe, if I'm not mistaken.
There were conversations with several of the teachers, wrestling coaches, and others about the space size, so that they would have access to be able to do things at different times that they needed to do, primarily, as I remember, with the principals related to the need for the weight room and the weight room area.
Right, but when we talk about wrestling, that's a specific thing, it's not a, you don't have a wrestling room in a weight room. It's two different things. Right.
The process was that during, during wrestling, during wrestling, when wrestling season's not in, the mech could be bolt up and kept in, kept in stores while, while available, and, and then when wrestling season was in, it could be, you know, try to have items that could be moved so that the wrestling mech could be laid out for practices and things, such as a stationary bike that's moved, moved, could be moved in to try to open it up, because the original space was very restrictive as far as the amount of space we had, most of the wrestling classes, weight conditioning classes have 30-plus students. The original classroom size that we had was not gonna accommodate safely a class of 30 students. So, but wrestling, wrestling, wrestling mats are only used in the afternoon, Joe, so it would be just one, they'll be stored and be able to be rolled back out during times that was needed, but just, so, possibly have equipment moved.
Okay, is it gonna be set up as a weight room, utilizing the space, because we need space because we have so many students? So we're gonna have to have weights and bikes and everything around that room, utilize the maximum space. So you're saying that when wrestling season come, we're gonna move all the equipment off someplace?
We're not looking at moving all the equipment, no, I mean, this, again, it'll be a process of, again, like, stations, stationary bikes, tripwheels, that, that could be moved and that are moved, it'll be along the line- It'll be along the line, it could be moved in enough so, so, so a mat can be rolled out and be laid out, but still be able to operate the mats fully as far as we're looking as far as dimension.
How large is every size-wise? I don't have the measurements, I just guess.
It's almost as big as a basketball court.
I'd have to go back and look at it now because I know we've tweaked it two or three times. It used to be more of a square and edge rectangle, and we have some storage closets here. I, I can find out and tell you, but I, I know that when Abe was looking at this initially, his thinking was the same, that they would probably take a third of it or, or maybe not quite half, and they would use the front part of it for the weight room and?
Did Abe consult with the athletic directors?
I'm not really sure, I couldn't say.
Mr. Nichols?
It would, I would assume so, I couldn't tell you for sure.
The athletic directors and the principal would be spoken about, but they, they were, they were much more open to it than the way it is now with the open space versus what we had with a, it was a smaller weight room session that was, that was there prior to in the original, in the original diagram.
Well, we only get one shot at it. Ms. Garner, you have a question?
My question is, are they able to have competition here, or would they have to?
Competition for wrestling would be in the main gym.
Okay.
That's as a practice area.
Okay.
The main room slash wrestling room is a practice. It's not, it's not the competition. Competitions would be in the gym.
Typically, a weight, a wrestling area is an area they can close off where the temperature increases and then get it nice and hot in there, it's a dedicated space. It's not a space when the mats are out. And that's why Mr. Edwards made a point, how large is that space, because we know the size of a wrestling mat. So if it's an open area, you're not gonna be able to, it's still gonna be an open area with a mat on the floor.
Right.
It's like, it's like taking a mat, putting it in the gym, saying that's a wrestling room.
Right.
And I guess my other question would be, Dr. Scales, and I guess, you know, Mr. Jeffers, who maybe have talked with some of these persons, who's gonna be tasked with the responsibility of moving that weight equipment around?
That'll be determined once we get to that point in the building. I mean, it, it, I mean, it, it could be, well, if wrestling is in there and they're, and they're ones going into season, moving them in and putting them back in place, or again, it's, it could be the, the, the last gym teachers of the day prior to that time of season. It's, it's too early to determine because we, we're not there, and we don't have the equipment at the moment.
Yeah, and with the comes.
It'll be determined at, at that point when we get in the building.
We know what weight rooms we have now. We know what wrestling room we have now. And when we're consolidating, that's gonna open wrestling up to both schools, which the numbers will increase, so you're gonna need a dedicated space. We don't have a weight room now, that's the only weight room, correct?
That's it.
That's a?
That's the only weight room.
That was part of the initial conversation was that the weight room size was inadequate for what?
Size was smaller than, was smaller than the weight rooms we had in the, in the schools right now. The, the original diagram with the wall.
Yes.
And, and the other half was gonna be the wrestling, so that was the conversation, can we, can we open it up and try it that way? Because it's, it's more than we've got now than what we had in the original diagram.
So what's the side between a weight room and a wrestling room?
What, what we had initially, the auxiliary gym, the O E guidelines recommend five thousand square feet for the auxiliary gym. So when we set this up initially, what we did is, I don't believe this distance has decreased at all, but because of some things that, that we've added and taken away over the duration of design, we had a five-foot clearance around the mat that fit back in this back area. And I think, you know, by the time you take this storage closets and so on out, you'd probably end up with a third of it was for the weight room and the two-thirds were for the wrestling room. And I think because typically, an auxiliary gym is not really considered something they use for competition, it's more like a practice or what have you, they felt like it wasn't big enough, and that may be why the wall needed to come out and they just opened it up to a big space. That's what I'm assuming took place.
My concern is thirty kids in there for wrestling, throwing weights. I mean, we got, you know, these are kids. If, if a kid on the wrestling team decides that he's mad at little Jimmy over there and he can reach back and get a barbell, you know, we've, we're creating a situation where they're not separated. That's my, that's my only thing, I mean, I don't, I'm not, I, I don't know.
I'm also of the opinion that we?
It shakes my brain.
I am also of the opinion, and it does concern me, that we do need a dedicated space, one for wrestling and one for a weight, weight room.
We can do whatever he instructs us to do because that's the way we had it before, but we look, we can go back to that.
We have Ms., Ms. Garner, Ms. Garner.
I have a question. We're talking about the division. Can you fix a petition where it can be drawn out to separate it and yet leave it open when the teachers or coaches want it?
You, you could always put a wall back in here, that's not an issue. Anything that you could open and close, personally, I don't see it's gonna hold up in a weight room, wrestling room environment. That's why we had a block wall in there to begin with.
Right. Ms. Bailey?
Yeah, so that weight room area then is instructional space? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, well, it, it's a multipurpose gym. I think you could use it for several things.
Well.
There is, there is a classroom now devoted to students who want to do weight training.
So?
And that was part of the issue was that the classroom space?
Is that that space?
That's the space, that's what, the space that would be here.
Okay.
And that was the issue that the principals and others brought up, is that we would not have an adequate space for that program to take place as well as have the dedicated space for the wrestling.
So I guess then we just need to ask ourselves, I mean, since that's instructional space, would take precedent, and I get that wrestling needs a dedicated space, is there a conflict? Wrestling is a winter sport, fall sport?
That's right now.
It's winter.
It's winter.
Winter?
Yes.
So it'd be very difficult to share the gym in the winter with wrestling?
Yeah.
So I don't see that as an option from a scheduling point of view. That's gonna be difficult with boys and girls' basketball, JV and varsity. So what, do we actually allow thirty students in a weightlifting, I mean, in a conditioning class now? Do they have space limits on those classes, Mr., Dr. Scales?
The, the classes are classes that are fairly open as far as enough in the number of students, they can be as high as thirty. They don't try to have that much, you know, strength and conditioning, but they can have thirty in the classroom. But the space that we originally were dealing with, with, when they had the wall, was again smaller than what we had for one of our current weight rooms. With, with the wall where it was the back, it was smaller than what we currently have.
Which weight room, Parkview or Blue Stone?
The one we were looking at was the Blue Stone.
Blue Stone weight room is the old automotive shop. That's, that's a big space.
Right, well, we were dealing with wrestling, I'm sorry, it was Parkview.
It was Parkview.
Ms. Swain was, was more concerned with that.
Well, it looks like the way it is, we're not gonna have space for the, we have a current, we try to, we wanna keep the programs that we currently have, and with this, and we wanna have a weight room, is, you can't do both. So with the recommendations that seems to have been made, I guess, Mr. Jeffries, I wish we would've known that before tonight, we could've had some dialogue. Because this just didn't happen yesterday, did it?
No, sir.
Okay. So it would've helped us had we known this prior to now seeing this. Having to give you the green light to say, yes, go forth with it. So communication is key when these things are made. I knew some changes were being made, but we just kinda gotta get it when it happens versus putting us on the spot right here. Pretty much you're saying the wrestling program is not gonna have a space to operate. Then we'll have to do a decision. Mr. Edwards?
If, if, well, if you compare it to the gym, the gym is what, eight thousand square feet? Is that what the number I'm looking at?
At middle school?
Fifteen thousand.
It's in the middle school.
Five thousand nine hundred.
Five thousand nine.
Nine hundred sixty-one, or is that a fifteen?
I don't know, I can't read it.
Are you talking about the high school side or the middle?
Yes, sir, the high school side.
That gymnasium?
I'd have to go back and look at that. I know that we've increased it a couple of times because of adding capacity for the seating. I don't know right off the top of my head.
So what size is the floor in there exactly, that, that basketball, the floor? What is basketball?
Basketball floor is ninety feet long.
All right.
That's gonna be about three size, three basketball courts.
Yep. So if, if that weight and wrestling room is a fifty by seventy, I don't know why you can't put a wall in there and separate them.
We can, we can, we could do that, we can put the wall back in for the wrestling and just know that the weight room will be reduced in size and limit the capacity students going in to what we have available for that weight room.
How big does a weight room need to be, you know?
It needs to be bigger than that, I would say.
It's fifty feet wide, you need something fifty feet wide?
Well, that's part of the point I was talking about, the conversation. These changes were made without, they've been made a while back, we didn't know. And now we know now, and it's almost like a dialogue, what do we, what do we do at this point? But thus, you know, that decision, we don't have to make tonight because you're looking at getting permits and everything else. We can, we, we, we have time to make a decision on the wall.
Yeah, not as soon as you're.
Okay. And I think we need the A Ds and, and other people to come in and, and have real stats, real dimensions, to decide whether or not we wanna put the wall back in place because we have been here for a while, and this is one of those things that has been popped on us, and I don't appreciate it. I wish that when it comes to major changes, we have several committees that this could've come to. It didn't go to athletics, I don't think it came to capital improvements. So that's something that we can handle internally, so you can continue on with, where you're going with everything else.
Okay. Well, I, I pretty much summed up all the changes that we have made recently. I know there's been a few little tweaks to the admin on both the first floor and the second floor, but it, it was essentially to just improve the spaces with flow and, and the staff that you have at hand, so that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
I do have one question, and I'm sorry, I, I just, and this is about the auditorium. Will the auditorium have a railing system in it for backdrops to be able to attach to lower and raise with the weights and, and things such as that?
The auditorium, I think you're referring to a fly loft or something like that?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, yes, a fly, I just couldn't, it didn't come in my mind.
This will not have that feature.
Okay.
This, this will have permanent screens and, and curtains in the back.
Yes, sir.
They can be opened and closed and moved aside and certain things done with them, but they'll all be, I hate to use the word permanent, but semi-permanent.
Yeah, and I just guess being involved in theater personally, you know, it's, it's hard to find people to be able to put those things together to build props and stuff like that anymore, and that fly system is so creative because you can order those backdrops when we do plays and stuff, and that's what I was so excited about, you know, bringing this auditorium, to be able to bring our performing arts, and especially, you know, for whatever, we have a touring group come through the county that wants to perform there or something, so that was my reasoning for asking that.
As, as we move forward, can you just give us a price on that so we'll know some point?
Of, of putting in a fly loft?
Yeah.
Yes.
That way we'll know and?
One thing I will say though, and we typically do this on most auditoriums where there is not a fly loft involved, at the back of, this is the stage, of course, this is second floor looking down on the stage, we always put a mezzanine. If you go back to the first floor, what we have back here is we've got the toilets and we've got dressing rooms, and, and this is a prop scene storage area back here in the very back. And right here is a set of stairs that go up and turn. And once you get up to the top, right here, all across the whole back of this is a mezzanine with a railing, and it has a removable port, portion of it so that the structure will be designed so that you can take scenes and props and lower them down. That's what we try to do to help both the situation when you don't have a fly loft.
And again, that's something we can always add in the future.
Okay.
We'll get a price for that, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you very much. Item C on our agenda tonight is a notification that as we're preparing the budget this year, there will be a new part of the budget, which will be a five-year capital improvement plan looking forward. It's not complete yet, it will be presented, but I did wanna make the, but, the board aware that that's being put into the works right now, it's gonna be necessary because we have just been going over to the board of supervisors with, and requesting things as they've come up, and now we've got a plan for it coming forward. And I don't know if you have any questions for Mr. Dalton, but he's here, if you have any initial questions related to that or wait until the meeting later.
We have a meeting later.
You bring a pizza.
Then, as well with the budget, the highest priority for the budget with the board was the teacher salaries and salary scale. Ms. Pfeffer has worked long and hard on looking at the, the salaries, the three percent increase, what that will cost. We've got that data, we're looking at five percent with what the state's looking, working on as well. But more importantly, I think you're interested in knowing, and we will be presenting this at the February board meeting, that we have redone the scale so that across the board there, it's much improved from what currently we have to be able to be competitive around the region eight. And this will be presented to the budget committee before we have our meetings, but just to give you one example, with this new scale, the beginning teachers would be starting at forty thousand as opposed to thirty-eight thousand and thirty-seven dollars. So that would be helpful with our recruiting efforts and moving across in so many areas and would help us at every level with fixing the scale from what it had been in the past. And I'll be presenting that to the finance committee later, but that's, that's significant.
Can you send that to all the board members as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll be happy to do that. Beyond that, we've talked about the historical records. You're aware that our marketing committee has been working on the new names and mascots and so forth for the new school, and Mr. Honeycutt's been serving on that committee, and he might have a report for you. Yes, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Nichols, we did meet on Thursday, Dr. Scales, myself, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Cypher's and the marketing staff, and excited about, and I'll pass these around to any of you all who'd like to see them, but who we might be playing as a four A or five A school when we move into our new building, the central district, which is the greater Richmond area, and also the Piedmont district. We toyed around with some names of some schools, and with Mr. Cypher's help, we put together a survey, which so far, Mr. Cypher's, when did that survey go out?
It went out this morning. It's actually a Richmond survey, so one that I gave you a copy of for the results of the staff.
Okay.
And then we have sent out the information to the community to start that process as well and be great.
Okay. So we've had two hundred and thirty-eight responses so far from our staff, and the names that we submitted to the public to make a choice was Lake Country Middle or, and High School, Lakeside Middle and High School, and Mecklenburg County Middle and High School. So once all of that data has come back in, we will be able to make a presentation at our February board meeting. So it's exciting. And also talking about, after this, we get our name locked down, then we're gonna put out some feelers on our mascot, and after that survey goes out, we'll bring that report back to you, and then the committee will put together some colors and make a presentation. So we feel like that we are moving in a positive direction.
Ms. Honeycutt, after you get those names, your committee will be recommending that to the board?
Yes, sir.
For a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the marketing committee, is that a school board committee?
No, ma'am, that's made up of school board, the art teachers from Millen High School. Marketing teachers. Marketing teachers, Dr. Scales again, and Mr. Cypher's.
I think it's a, just an ad hoc committee for the construction project.
Okay.
Not a standing committee, that's what I understand. Isn't that right?
That's great. Well, Mr. Chandler?
Go ahead.
Just one comment, from all the people that I've talked to, since it's all Mecklenburg County taxpayers, Mecklenburg County money. County taxpayers, Mecklenburg County money, all the comments I'm getting is this school should be called Mecklenburg County High School, Mecklenburg County Middle School. I mean, I'm getting, when you ask them what we should call this, they go, I don't think it should be in question, but we'll see what everybody says when we make that mistake.
Ms. Bailey, in regards to that committee, I think the committee started, when did that committee start?
I asked you about appointing somebody for that back in the fall.
It was back in the fall, but my first meeting that I made was this past Thursday.
Right, we've had several meetings, and that's the first one that you've been able to get to.
Okay, so the meeting started around November, December? Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, the historic, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was mistaking those parts. Yes, the last item on the agenda then is there is a request for historical records from the historically black schools of Mecklenburg County Organization, and I know that this, there's a letter that you have on yours from Mr. Glancy Spain, requesting that as we go through the process of merging the schools' information such as old trophies and pictures and yearbooks and such, be turned over to them for historic purposes and a museum type of purposes. There is a requirement that we go through, I don't think, know if it's the same historical society as what you're looking at, but we have to make sure we're meeting guidelines of the state for that type of thing, but we wanna comply with that request, and we will be working with them on that whole process.
Some background in that, Mr. Nichols. The reason this organization has submitted formal, a formal request for it is, at Parkview Middle School, it's my understanding, a new principal came to that school years ago, and really just put all the items on the table and told people to come take them. This was the old pictures of the schools and the students. And the association was stronger at Blue Stone Middle, I believe, and they had a partnership with the school, and if you go to Blue Stone Middle, you'll see the pictures on the walls. If you go to Parkview Middle, it's non-existent. This organization has tried to get some of those pictures and artifacts back. Unfortunately, because they were given away, people tried to sell them back to the organization. So they're putting in a request to say, hey, school board, we are an active organization, we will have a place to store those artifacts, and they're asking for permission from this board to do a vote, saying, once we consolidate, we will be willing to give those artifacts to the organization that's housing them. For tonight, it's for information, it will be for a vote next month.
Thank you, Mr. Sturman. This just came in today, so that's very helpful to us as well, to know the background of it.
That's the background on it.
So is there something that the administration needs to do to determine what we can give them and what we can't?
Well, you know, Mr. Nichols, you said you have to go through a process?
We will need to be in touch with the historical society that's always looking to make sure that they have access to records. I think it's mostly records that they're looking for, not items.
Well, they're talking items like pictures and trophies that are currently being displayed in the school.
Right, but we will touch base to make sure that our, that we're covered.
Yes, because unfortunately, a lot was lost, and they can't get them back.
That's the East End and West End stuff, right?
East End.
Not the Parkview, Blue Stone, so that'll go to the new school, right, didn't you?
The Blue Stone Middle, Parkview Middles was formerly known as East and West End, the black schools. They're talking about, the name of this organization is-
Yeah, I read the, I read the letter.
Yeah, historically, black schools, they just want-
They wanted something that refers to East End High School and West End High School.
Yes, not Parkview Middle or Blue Stone Middle.
Because that's stuff you were gonna carry over to the new school, possibly.
Right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that we'd ever, anything that's done away with would have to go through the board to move it out, so it'll be a while to make sure that we are not wasting anything or giving it away inappropriately before it'll get out of our hands.
Their concerns, because it has happened in the past.
Right.
You know, to include Thine Institute, those type things, the pictures that were in schools that were just put in basements or thrown away or discarded. So they wanna officially address our board so that they can save these items, so when we move, we just don't box them up and put them someplace. All right, what do we have next?
That's all I have.
Mr. Nichols, you have anything else?
That's all, Mr. Sturman. Thank you all for coming tonight, special meeting.
Ms. Bailey, do you have anything?
I just would encourage the public to weigh in on how we might move forward to address this teacher shortage, because we still have folks who live here that experienced international teachers in our system, and to look at what was presented tonight and see how this is different, and how it might help us fill some of these necessary positions that our kids are, they don't have the teachers, so that's important. And just to weigh in for us-
Yes, ma'am.
-so that we'll be better informed to make a vote next, in two weeks.
In two weeks. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Palmer?
Nothing.
Mr. Edwards?
Captain, may I?
Ms. Garner?
Oh, yeah. We saw the footprint. When would bids start going out? That's what I-
We're still working on creating, we should do in July, mid-July, and see if any of this, and then that timeframe is consistent. So July, mid-July.
Okay. Mr. Ritchie?
Yeah, just to the marketing committee, just I briefly saw what you had there, would encourage you to maybe eliminate competing names that might be splitting votes. You have two very similar names, and if you can narrow it down to just two names instead of three, because it's, it looks like one might actually be splitting votes. And the other thing is, are we gonna poll business community at all about, are they gonna have any, because I know this has been, has been touted as an economic development project as well.
Right, the polling is available for the businesses to be able to be, we will encourage them to be doing that as well.
How we market the school as well. Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have a choice. I mean, Mecklenburg is where it's gotta go. I mean, I just can't see it going any other way.
I think-
Well, that might be, but we're not the only ones that get to choose.
I think ultimately, this board will decide by vote, but I think it's good for community engagement, so that we can put it out there and as a process that everyone can engage in. And I think the way it's looking, as Mr. Ritchie just said, two of those names are very similar, and it's probably gonna come down to one referencing a lake and the other one representing the county.
Right, if you could go ahead and narrow it down, then you can get the votes.
Well, we can do that, Mr. Ritchie.
Well, I just-
Yeah, they can, they can, they're gonna make-
They want with that, but-
Well, they're gonna make recommendations to us. If we wanna narrow it down, we can. We can do that as a recommendation. He's presented to us what has come in so far.
Yes, it's early, early.
We can give a little more time and see what the other results come back. One week, today?
Today.
Today. So we can, we can-
It's still early.
We have more information at our next school board meeting, and then we can see what the numbers look like.
Okay, because he says he's already getting information.
Some.
Some. It went out today, and-
It's been out one day, not even twenty-four hours, yeah.
Well, Mr. Honeycutt, I appreciate you serving on that committee and bringing us that information. If you can get that digitized and send it to us as well, so we can see what the numbers are?
Yes, Mr. Cypher's, if you will help me do that, so we can send that information to the other board members.
That's the main website, it's on the other, it's on grade three through twelve, click on our member, that's definitely live today.
Okay.
And it's just a click on it, it's like simple, you can click it and submit it, each effect of the.
So the results will be online as well?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have something?
I just thought I could steal the interaction.
Okay. Board members, whatever, anything else? Mr. Sturman?
I'm just sorry, I just wanted to say real quick, briefly, to thank Mr. Opton and his staff for working so hard to make sure that we get this thing right. Saying again, thank you for being here this evening and answering some questions, and we just look forward, this thing's gonna happen. I'm excited. Thank you. And ma'am, also, thank you for bringing us that information this evening. We desperately need it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Seven minutes.
Second. Meeting adjourned.